Can we have a roll call, Ms. Tamery?
Member Ash?
Here.
Member Miriam?
Here.
Member Pats?
Present.
Vice President Dice?
Here.
President Affeld?
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any changes to the agenda, Superintendent?
Good evening, everyone. Yes, there is one change, Board members, tonight. We have an error on the agenda, so I would like to pull off Discussion Item G4 for a future meeting, if that's okay? The Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Teachers. We'll bring that back to you to the next board meeting.
Okay. It does have to be approved before June 30th, I believe?
I think that's correct.
So that should work. With that change, is that the only change?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so do we have a motion except that modification of the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now's the time for public comment on any items not on the agenda and within the board jurisdiction. Would anyone care to address the board on any item not on the agenda? Wonderful. Everyone's come to address items on the agenda, except Mr. Donahue. He has. He hasn't commented.
This isn't working. The microphone is not working. Okay. Tonight, there's an item on the agenda that I'm not going to be talking about right now, but I just wanted to note, everyone to note, Item G... Seven. Board Member Pats requests Emory Schools and Programs. There was a lot of people here tonight for this item. And what it's going to be about is going to be about the... Mr. Pats, Board Member Pats is talking about the possibility of retaining Emory... I'm sorry, Annie Yates Elementary School as an elementary school. A lot of people are here tonight for that, probably. And also maybe perhaps the Emory Education Fund item before that. There could have been a lot more people here, except there was no robo-call given to parents, as there usually is when something important... When the district feels there's something important that parents want to know about, they will commonly use a so-called robo-call from the office at, in this case, the elementary school, to the parents. But there was no such call given tonight, or today, or in the last several days regarding this meeting. And the reason I found out there was no such robo-call is because the Superintendent, Mr. Rubio, John Rubio, deemed it not appropriate. Couple of parents, at least two parents, requested that robo-calls go out to parents, especially to Annie Yates' children, because we feel this is an important meeting, because we're going to be discussing the wisdom of keeping Annie Yates open. And this is a subject that parents have wanted to talk about for years here at this district, but we've never been granted a forum. So tonight is historic in that regard, because we're finally now being able to talk. Parents are going to hear to be able to talk about the wisdom of closing Annie Yates. So you would think that the... This is very... This is existential nature of the school. And so you would think that the district would deem this important enough that they should notify parents and go above and beyond the legal minimum notification requirements and issue a robo-call, as they have done for other issues. But Mr. Rubio, apparently, and I'd like to have him explain, thinks that it's not important enough, this issue, to issue... To give to parents a robo-call. Now, as I said, legally, the district doesn't have... They're in the clear here. They don't have to give us a robo-call on this. They can do the legal minimum, which is in fact what they've done. The Brown Act provides that they have to...
You have a minute.
...provide meetings in a way that they have done. But I want to know, why didn't they go above and beyond that, as they have with other, what I would say, less important issues than this issue here tonight? As I said, the district in the past has disallowed us to talk about the wisdom of closing Annie Yates. And so now, thank you to Board Member Pats, we're finally now talking about it, kind of years later. But I would like Mr. Rubio, the Superintendent of the Schools, to tell us here now why you made it verboten for the principal of the Annie Yates Elementary School to issue a robo-call, if not the principal of the high school, a robo-call to parents regarding this meeting. Because you could have done it, it would have been legal to have done it. There's a precedent to have done something like this for a meeting of this importance.
You're out of time.
And I just want to know why you elected not to let us know, not to volunteer the extra transparency that you could have done. I'm just kind of curious, why not?
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Donahue.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'd like an answer from the Superintendent.
Thank you. This is not public question, it's public comment period?
Yes.
Well, thank you for your comment.
The Brown Act does provide...
The next item on the agenda is our reports. We're moving on. Thank you. Do we have a CSCA report? Do we have an ETA report tonight? No. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Turner. A student representative report? Superintendent's report?
Good evening, everybody. I have a few things to report out on tonight. One item is that we had a very good visit this morning to another school in Hayward we were taking a look at. Several of the high school teachers, the principal, and some of our administrators, myself, were visiting the school to... You know, we're always looking for ideas that we can, you know, consider for our own schools. And so it was a very fruitful visit. The teachers were very happy that they had the time and opportunity to look at the school. And we're primarily looking at how the students at this school have to defend a project before they can graduate high school. So I wanted to report out on that. The other thing I'd like to announce is that we have made a... We have renewed our commitment to the Cala Art Institute for sixth grade next year and for high school. As you may know, we have Cala integrating science and art at the sixth grade level. And I'm very pleased that we have been able to do that for our sixth graders this year. And so we're going to be doing that again next year. And again, they're going to be helping the high school. And I know that they've got... They have received some funding from some community members to continue to help the school district. So I think it's great that we can continue that. So for all next year's sixth graders, I'm very excited that they'll have that opportunity. I think I'd like to also report to you that there was a large job fair today where school districts were at the county office. And we were represented by our HR Director and our Assistant Principal from Annie Yates. And they were able to meet several applicants, including some applicants for some of the harder-to-fill positions that we have struggled with, like other districts in the past, particularly single-subject science positions and single-subject math. So as you know, we are endeavoring to strengthen our middle school model by having fully... Full single-subject credential teachers in science and math, as well as adding PE and music for next year, so that we can give more programs and a stronger program for our middle school students. So that would be my report. I will add one thing. By coincidence, we have just renewed our contract with SynrenVoice, which is for our robo-call system. And it is for, you know, for school-site-sponsored events, as we have usually used it. So we are renewing our contract for next year.
Thank you, Superintendent. In terms of a board president's report, I wanted to pick up on the report I did take off half the day this morning to visit, a site visit at a high school in Hayward. Second time that I've gone out there. Very impressed with the model, the deeper learning, college-ing, career-ready model that they're following there. And it's basically a project-based learning, integrating across subjects, students collaborating, working through projects instead of a lecture, textbook, sort of a traditional lecture model, combined with, as Superintendent said, not standardized tests, although they do whatever the state tells them they have to do there, but really focused on portfolio assessments and deep defense of their projects. And they have to pass a benchmark assessment, or they don't go on after the sophomore year, and then they have to pass a senior year benchmark assessment, or they don't graduate. They're graduating 100% of their kids A- to G-ready for college and career, and they're really focused on that. So on Friday, the Superintendent and I will be hosting a site visit from a group of teachers, administrators from Met West, which is a very innovative, traditional high school in Oakland. That is another model, but employs some very similar intensive student support, emotional learning. Met West is about the size of our high school, 160 students. And combines similar sort of collaborative, project-based learning with intensive internships. The students from freshman year through high school are in internships two days a week and in school three days a week. And the internships are integrated with their project-based learning and their career and college preparation. And they have very high going college rates as well. So on Monday, the Superintendent and I are meeting... Or Tuesday, I guess it is, with a woman who's a national expert on digital learning and how to integrate technology into your curriculum to accelerate learning as well. So it was a very rich conversation with the teachers this morning. And I think those are exactly... The challenges in front of us are trying to figure out what is... What's the program we want to do to improve the robust offerings, particularly at the middle school and the high school? And I think that that's exactly, exactly the kind of conversation we ought to be having. And I look forward to seeing how those play out further with the teachers. All right.
I have a comment on Item E.
On Item E?
Comment, please?
We don't normally take public comment on Item E, but sure, why not?
You should, because the Brown Act does provide for it.
Not sure about that, since it's a report item. Go ahead.
Okay, the gentleman in the center here, the man that was just speaking, his name is John Affeld. He is the school board president. And he just told the group that the public comments section are meant only for public comments and that the public officials before you here are not allowed to answer or make any comment themselves regarding public comments. I'm here to tell you that that is false. The Brown Act does provide that the elected officials and the administration may in fact answer questions, as long as they don't engage in a substantive discussion. That's what the Brown Act provides. So Mr. Affeld was incorrect when he told us all here tonight that Mr. Rubio, the Superintendent, was not allowed to answer my question that I queried earlier regarding why no robo-calls for the shuttering of Annie Yates. So Mr. Rubio could in fact answer that question and tell us all why there was no robo-call issued to the parents for this meeting tonight. If he wanted to do so, it would not be illegal. As a matter of fact, there's a precedent for that here at these meetings and at this district. I have noticed when non-combative or sort of parents that get up here or citizens and praise the five school board members and ask a clarifying question, they will be commonly answered. So there is a precedence for it. So everybody here should understand that Mr. Rubio does not have to answer my question, but he could answer it, and he would be within the law. And so he's choosing not to answer the question. And so I'll put it to him one more time. Mr. Rubio, if you could please tell us why no robo-calls were issued for this meeting. And you don't have to answer, but I would appreciate an answer. I think it would be something nice to do here for the parents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Donahue. Onto the consent calendar. Do we have any items that anyone would like to pull from the consent calendar?
Item one.
Okay, item one.
And I need to pull Item Six to make a correction and to make an introduction.
Any other items to be pulled? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and address Items Two, Three, Four, Five, and Seven? Do we have a motion to adopt Items Two, Three, Four, Five, and Seven?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Tamery.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Item one. Mr. Pats, you had some questions?
Yeah, so looking through the warrants, as I do each time these come up, I was... I noticed that we have a $30,000 check going to Townsend Public Affairs? Okay, sorry. And I just think at this time, we really need to think about where we're spending our money. And I thought $30,000 a year was a bit much. Thank you, Dr. Rubio, for getting back to me. It's actually a $60,000 a year cost. And I just think that that's money that doesn't go to the classrooms. And so I would, you know, I believe this is for past expenses, not going forward. So I think we have to pay it, because we've already gotten the service. But I just think it's... We should get out of the Townsend business. I looked into that a little bit, and there are no school districts, other than Emory, that currently pay Townsend for their services. There is the city of Emeryville and a few other cities, but all the school districts seem to get in for a short period of time and then get out. And that's based on their website yesterday. And their little methodology putting an asterisk next to "active clients", and we aren't the only school district. And it just seems to me that $60,000 a year is huge. And so in these times of budget constraints, I just would like to see... And I know, you know, Dr. Rubio, you've been given board direction in the past on this. So I just think it's something we, as a board, need to really strongly reconsider. I don't think it's a good use of student money.
Thank you for that. Without opening a discussion on the topic, I would just say that I've had similar questions and concerns, whether that is money best spent. And I think it's definitely worth looking into. Any other...
Yes.
I was just going to add, I think, based on the topic that we have in terms of the multi-year projection, it is absolutely an opportunity to look at where we spend and definitely our partnerships or relationships that are not providing us opportunities to, you know, increasing our revenue, we have an opportunity to look at everything. So I think if that is the case, I hope that this particular item will come back to the board. And it wouldn't be addressed philosophically, makes sense. But I know it wouldn't be addressed in this space. But I know we have budget and many other topics coming up. So I think it's a great time to do it.
Okay. I actually had some questions on the warrants as well.
You did. I meant to tell you those questions. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I tried to... Well, I did send those to you ahead of time. $37,000 from Sedexo?
That's our food company that provides the lunches.
I thought it was Cisco, I guess.
It used to be, at one point, maybe. Or Cisco is a big company. I'm not sure if we had them here.
It's the same?
But Sedexo.
Okay, all right. What is Tyre Inc., T-Y-R?
That is... I don't know, Mr. Bakers, I've never heard of that. We have some construction-related expenses. Those are... Yeah, construction. Inspector of Record, I think.
Oh, yeah. The state requires the inspector of record be on-site, and that's who that is?
Yeah.
Got it. For ECCL construction, okay. And Imprint Moran Printing for $27,000?
That is a publishing company down in Louisiana that publishes all of the Common Core math books.
Okay, so those are instructional materials. All right. With that, do we have a motion to...
I'm sorry, I had pulled Item... I had a couple of things.
Oh, we're going to do this.
You can do one at a time, I'm sorry.
And then I'll move on to Six.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on Item One of the warrants to adopt or not adopt?
Move approval or adoption of warrants as listed.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Item Six, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Under personal actions tonight, we have one correction we'd like to make. We have a date that needs to be changed. Charisse Cologne is going to be on loan again by her request to be the Contra Costa County Office of Education. And that should read effective July 1/15, not July 1/14. So I just wanted to make note of that correction before we move for any adoption of this. And then the other item, I'd like to take a moment, if I could, to introduce our current part-time addition to our staff, Ms. Lori McDonald, who I'm going to ask to come up. Lori has been a teacher, a principal, a coach, has done training for our school district, and was a dynamite, one very well-received trainer in math last summer. And, you know, we are... We have the great benefit of being able to hire her, and Berkeley Unified is her current employer. But Ms. McDonald is now joining us. So Lori, you want to just say a couple of things? Welcome to our Emeryville family.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to say hi. This is my seventh day. I'm doing both jobs for just a month or so. I've had a chance to work with some students and teachers and the principals and the district folks, even some board members. And so this is a really great place to be, and I'm really happy about working with you all and look forward to what we're going to accomplish together. So thanks.
Okay, thank you. Member Pats?
Yeah, so I have a couple of things on both items, but I'm going to start with this one. This is not a reflection on you. I'm really excited you're joining Emory and welcome aboard. But I have a procedural question. It seems awkward to me that I'm asked to ratify somebody who's already started working. And I'm under the impression that while we can make offers, the person is not actually employed until the board has taken action. Am I incorrect in that?
Yeah, I think... I believe that as Superintendent, the board authorizes me to offer employment.
That's what I would think, and we authorize the Superintendent to fill this position.
Okay, I'm just... Again, in every district I've worked, we've had to wait for board ratification, with the exception of the county office where... Yeah, so...
Ms. Horell, do you have any insight into this question? Director of HR?
Just speaking from the... Just speaking from the input I've gotten from other HR directors, again, the Superintendent does have the authority to hire. And based upon that, then the board approves the actions that have been taken.
And if we didn't approve, then we'd owe the person some money for their work, but...
That hasn't occurred, and that's just something that I really hope we don't have to encounter.
No comment on that?
All right.
And then some questions you might want to... Some questions on the teacher on loan. This is the second year for this, that we've loaned this person, am I correct?
Yes.
So I guess at a certain point, does it become a rent-to-own option? Or I, you know, I kind of... I feel like if we're, you know, one of our items on is highly qualified teachers, and if we have a teacher who's good enough to be a BITSA coach, I'm sort of wondering what's the logic of letting them go serve kids in West County?
In the contract, it states that they can do it for a year, they can ask for a second year. But beyond that, then I think there could be some discussion as to whether or not the board would like to approve it for another year. Oh, in the contract, there is a stipulation that the teacher can go on leave for a year. And again, they can request for a second year. But beyond that, it would appear that there would be reason for the board to have... For the discussion and not necessarily approve that third year.
So is this requiring us to hire any teachers on a temporary contract?
No, sir, it's not.
Or are they... Were able to fill the position even though they're gone?
Yes, because that... Yes.
Okay, that seems unusual to me.
Well, the person was acting as a coach. They weren't in the classroom.
They were a coach here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
And their salary is being paid by the county, not by us, right?
Correct.
And so we've used the savings, as it were, to have an assistant principal at Annie Yates this year, supporting the principal.
Right, and as a Superintendent, I endeavor to support teachers in their requests for growth and job opportunities. And Ms. Cologne made this request, and I wanted to be supportive.
Savings is not the word I would have chosen to use there, because there's going to be a greater cost, I hope, for a VP than for a teacher. So I think we're incurring an extra cost if we're using a VP to fill a teacher on special assignments. I would suspect. I could be wrong, but that is generally how salary schedules work. So I'm not sure that that's the right term. We're using the cost plus a little extra. But again, I just want to make sure that we're Emory's covered first before we start sending people to other districts. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, with the amendment, I think we're... Thank you, Ms. Horell. With the amendment of correcting the year to 2015, as proposed by the Superintendent, do we have a motion to adopt Item Six?
Move to approve as amended.
I'll second. Just to move us along, roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Okay. Onto our discussion items. The first item is Strategic Planning Local Control Accountability Plan Goals.
Yes, good evening. The purpose of this item is to bring to the board for approval the work that we've been doing, and we started with parents and teachers, city staff, and university staff in January to help set our focus for our district work for the next three years, while also to use that to inform our LCAP planning process. I'm very pleased with all the input that we've gotten from parents and teachers. And I think it's... These goals are going to really help us move forward. So I'd like to bring these to you tonight and ask for your approval in their current form.
Okay. And I had just a few comments, but before getting to the substance, I guess, as I saw it, these goals, which, as you said, were developed out of some strategic planning activities conducted by members of the community, teachers, parents, over two days in January. We reviewed as a board at our retreat in February, general agreement with direction. They're not really new goals, I guess. I mean, they're updating, I see it, the goals that we've been working on for several years. I mean, providing basic educational opportunities for all students. It's been in our mission to overcome racist and class practices for years now. College and career readiness, deeper learning, that's been a longtime goal of the district. The board has indicated its desire to bring in technology into our curriculum and update our classrooms, and obviously, we've been working on ECCL for many, many years. So...
Updated goals, maybe?
Yeah, updated, you know, it's my... But... But also, we're required now by the state to have strategic plan every year. It's called the Local Control Accountability Plan. And we have folks working on that and committees meeting. And I think we're still, I hope, open to take more people to get involved in the strategic planning process over the next three, well, over the next couple of months, to map out what should we be doing in each of these goal areas, specifically, concretely. Put that in our Local Control Accountability Plan. Say what the actions are and what the money is on each of those actions that we're gonna spend. And hold ourselves accountable for delivering on those. And every year, under the LCAP, there's an annual update where we will go back and say, well, did we do that? Did we spend that money? Did we carry out those actions? So I think this is a really good opportunity for folks who are interested in helping to craft the district's strategic plan and actions, to get involved in this process and help articulate that. Lastly, I would just say, I think the motion tonight is not to set these in stone forever. It's sort of a preliminary, in my mind, thumbs up, and we can't really adopt. We're giving direction to the committees and the staff that are working on the LCAP, which needs to come to us for final approval by June 30th this year. So we're not adopting the LCAP tonight, and if these committees generate, you know, other directions or flush it out in a different way, I mean, then we're open to hearing that. So I think what we're doing here is saying, this is the, we agree with the work that people have done to date in articulating and updating these goals and giving direction to the committees. So go forth and make these concrete. Other thoughts and comments?
I was just gonna add, I think part of what I do like about the approach is that I think we have always been in a situation where, I think last year's LCAP, just as an example, when you have so many priorities, where people are lining up, and there's many things that need to be addressed, so it does help to have some clarity in terms of what areas will be impacted by X. So I think that is a huge benefit to have had a process, which I know no process is ever perfect, but I think, you know, it's important to institute some way, some methodology, to ensure that, you know, the spending is gonna be held to a certain way. Because at this point, I don't know, I think we're pretty clear that there's some things that were instituted last year as to-do items aren't necessarily happening as they should. So I think this would be, especially this is the first year of the LCAP, you know, that whole huge shift that all school districts had to jump behind. So I think this will help for certain. And as I mentioned earlier, I know that we do have a budget to adopt by the end of, is that the same time? Same, June 30th?
Yes, same, same year.
So we have those two things that have to be very much, you know, enmeshed. So I do appreciate having some clarity in terms of objectives to aim for, so I just wanted to add that.
Other thoughts? Mr. Pats?
So I do have some concerns with this. I do feel like we're back-dooring in the vision and mission statement, although these are just the goals from that. I do have some concerns that we're still spending money on an outside consultant for this endeavor, which I don't know is needed. When we look at the LCAP process, it really is supposed to be an internal process, utilizing staff and the community and parents and even students. And so I think it's a miswording, but I'm just struck by these goals have been presented at multiple parent events, and I don't know that I'm comfortable adopting goals that are presented to parents as opposed to being developed with parents. I know that was, they were developed at the visioning process, because I've seen them before, but I still think when we're talking about the LCAP, we need to be very careful and make sure that it is, we're following the correct process. This is, it's where our money is coming from, and it's all tied together, and it's a very specific staff and families coming together to get our goals for us, and not sort of a top-down endeavor. And again, to me, it should be very much an internal process. We have staff capacity that we're adding to every day, but we should not be doing it. So I have some trouble with it.
Okay, well, I think the parents were very involved in the crafting of the goals, and were very much a part of the committee that helped come up with the goals. And secondly, I guess, I feel more comfortable with the process as a whole because these aren't coming out of left field, because they are, you know, re-articulations and updating of directions we've been moving. And as Member Dice said, a focusing from the, you know, maybe too many goals in last year's LCAP to a more focused approach. That, but yeah, obviously, the issue of parent engagement is one that I care very much about. As some of you know, I was personally, in my day job, involved in the drafting of the Local Control Accountability statute and plans. And personally, take credit for convincing the Brown administration to make parental involvement one of the eight state priorities that we have to be held accountable for. And very involved in the student engagement requirements as well. So it will continue to be a learning process for all of us, and with fits and starts, but I really appreciate all the folks turning out tonight to express your views, and urge you to also consider getting involved in the strategic planning process. And some of you are, I know that. Any other thoughts or comments on this item? Do we have a motion to... Oh, I'm sorry, absolutely right. Do we have public comment on this item? Before we move. Please identify yourself.
Sorry, I have my teacher, she's on today. Hi, I'm JJ Tong. I'm a parent, part of the district here, and I'm just curious whether or not there was any look into those parents who couldn't participate in the action committees that were planned. So I did sign up for that. However, I work full-time, and I do not have the ability to come on a Thursday at 8:30 to 11:00 for six weeks. You know, my manager isn't gonna let that happen. So this came up during one of the meetings that you were part of, and I was just curious if that had been looked into, and whether or not we will have an alternate way to either review what's been happening or participate in some way.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. There is also required for the district to have a parent advisory committee that is made up of a majority of parents. And I also had a hand in getting that into the law. And so we certainly better do that. And so number one, we have to have a parent advisory committee that reviews the LCAP and that responds and can ask the superintendent questions about the LCAP or comments, and the superintendent has to respond in writing. So hopefully, give your name to superintendent or anyone else here who's interested in being on the parent advisory committee, because we do need to form that. Number two, and I don't wanna start talking about another item before we got there too much, but you'll see there is an item on student engagement coming up. And in there, there is a proposed board policy that all student and parent committees be held at times that are convenient to parents.
Okay, so what I heard you say, then, just to make sure I understand, that for the meetings that are happening, there is not, we're not gonna be involved necessarily unless we can make it to those meetings. But if we want to participate and see what came out of those meetings, we should sign up for the parent committee that will be formed soon.
Yes, except, I would be happy if some of those current action committees could also meet in evening hours or weekends, but I'll turn to the superintendent for that to know if you've thought about that, or if that's even possible.
We have, the issue right now is that the amount of parent input that we receive to develop this was very helpful. We have some parents, I know, I think you and I may have spoke about this at the art events when I saw you. But right now, because the action committee teams are developing out the work that the teachers primarily are gonna have to do, they're a little bit heavier loaded with teachers in terms of the action steps. So I think probably the best avenue for us really is going to be a Saturday, 11:00 AM, parent advisory committee or an evening committee. I think I'll probably offer a couple different times. I think that'll probably be our best way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. And I think this is an issue, because we obviously have to, we have to include the teachers. That's another required stakeholder group, and as you say, they're the ones implementing the actions. So we have to work with them too. But we've gotta figure out how to do this in a way that serves both purposes.
I'm a little confused. I felt like there was a confusion of two different types of meetings there. What I understood the question to be was that we have a potential mission vision with goals that we're going to, at some point, I hope, consider adopting or not. And in that regard, there were some action items attached to it, and committees developed to work on those action items. And those committees were set to be meeting during what we'll call standard business hours. And the response that I heard, the answer I heard, did not relate to adjusting that so parents could participate on the visioning goals. But instead, I heard it changed to, well, there's parent participation in the LCAP, because, well, that's mandated by law, and we'll make sure that that's during parent-accessible times. Am I wrong in that, or is that, you heard it differently?
I don't believe that's what I said.
No, I didn't, I was actually, no, I was talking to Mr. Affeld, so. So yeah, I mean, and so I guess my question is, did your question get answered?
Yeah, I mean, yes, I hear that I just participate in the area.
But not in the visioning goals? Okay, Claire, that's, because that's what I heard as well.
Did you think you said something different, superintendent?
Well, what we're trying to do is to accommodate the needs of everyone and have everyone's input as much as possible. And we do have quite a number of parents who are coming right now, and I know it's not a great time. The dilemma is that our teachers, it will be very difficult for them to stay and come in the evenings with their families and whatnot. So we're, it's a balancing act, and it's difficult. And so I think it's important that we make as many opportunities as possible for both groups.
Okay. Alright, so the current action committees do have parents on them who are participating, and other parents who can't articulate those goals or those actions will...
Absolutely.
Have access to the parent advisory committee and influence the LCAP and the goals and actions that way? Okay. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Hi, my name's Brian Carver, I'm a parent in the district. I don't know if I agree with much of what Mr. Donahue said earlier tonight, but I do agree that probably most people are here to speak on either G7 or G6. And the time on the agenda for that was approximately 6:30, which were now safely passed. So anybody who is counting on that should be here by now. So I would just wanted to request, if it's at all possible, to rearrange the agenda so that G6 or 7 or both could be handled before any other lengthy items. I know people with kids and so on would appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Carver, we just spoke, just stole my thunder, but I'll go into a little more detail with that. First of all, before I get into that, I wanted everyone here to note, the woman that spoke before Mr. Carver, I'm sorry, I missed your name. She was speaking at public comment section on an agendized item. She made some comments, and you'll note that they engaged in a dialogue with that speaker. It just happened three, four, five minutes ago. The reason why they, the board and the superintendent engaged in that speaker is because that speaker was not proffering criticism. In this district, if you are critical, if you're a parent and you have invested in this district, in my case, my daughter, so I'm heavily invested in this district. If you're critical, if someone like me or anybody else is critical, offers criticism at a public comment and asks a question, they will beg off and say that they're not allowed to answer, which is false. But if a commenter is not critical or is, offers compliments or is neutral, then they commonly... If that person is popular and well-liked by these people, then they will offer answers. So, you know, we should have a better school district than that. We should have a better school board than that. If parents have some criticism and they have some concerns and they ask questions, they should get equal treatment to those people that offer praise and are popular. So unpopular people should be able to get answers, just like popular people. People that offer criticism should be able to get answers, just like people that offer praise. It's only fair, and Mr. Affeld tonight just very clearly showed that this is not a fair situation, that I had just made alleged earlier. And thank you, Mr. Affeld, for showing everybody that my earlier criticism was in fact accurate. Now I wanted to let everybody know here that I concur with what Mr. Carver just said. I asked Mr. Affeld before the meeting started, I said, there's many new phases here. I happen to have some knowledge that a lot of people here wanna talk about the closing of Annie Yates, which is a little farther on down the agenda. Could you please, Mr. Affeld, in deference to the parents that are trying to take care of their children, babysitting, what have you, could you please move that item up? It's a reasonable request. And our answer tonight... You can see by the applause that, in fact, that was accurate. But the answer from Mr. Affeld was, no, he's not gonna accommodate that reasonable request. Maybe it's because I asked, and I'm commonly critical of the district. And once again, I just don't think you should behave like that. I think you should offer, be more fair to the parents, and if people are critical, that's okay. You should be able to accept criticism and not, you know, be so thin-skinned. And I just think you should just change your behavior. I think it was a reasonable request to move this item up, and you should have done that. So please do that now.
Mr. Affeld?
I was just gonna say, I mean, I typically don't. I think I've been on the board for a long, extended period of time, true enough. People have seen me, know me. I've changed a lot in the last two years, but been around. But I think it is really not accurate to have everybody walk out of this room and believe that your first statement is correct, because that is not true. When the item is discussed, and it may be, maybe it's true for you, and I, you know what? It's true for a lot of people. It's okay, I'm a liar, is that what you said? Okay, I'm just checking, because I'm not a liar. But I did wanna say that I think it's important that everyone understand, it's one thing to have Brown act, it's one thing to conduct business in a consistent way. And you know what? It happens sometimes up here. If certain topic happens, true enough, you may have somebody jump in. But I think it's really unfair to say that one person is treated differently when, in this case, this specific case, I'm telling you about today, and I'm just looking at you directly, when a person asks on a topic that was agendized, that's the whole point, the clarifying point. That public comment can be to, you know, used for that. If there's a question of clarity, that was what was brought. So I just think, you know, we're not sitting up here just to create rules for special people. I don't do it. Whether you think the whole five, or two, or four, or whatever, I don't do it. But I think it's just really important to not have everybody here, who's interested in a particular topic or whatever it is, walk away feeling that that's the truth of what... walk away feeling that that's the truth of what this board is. That's just, I just wanted to address that. But the other topic, you might have got solid question there, but I'm just saying.
And really quickly, I, just so you know, when Ms. Fong was speaking, I felt criticized. So I thought her comment was critical of the district. So I think you get a response based on whether or not we think a response will be helpful, you know. And so I sometimes think not responding is the best response, so.
Yeah. The purpose of the board meeting here is to conduct the business of the district, and it has many aspects. And we have many agenda items, and to do so in an open and public and productive way. So we're endeavoring to do that. Doesn't mean everyone who comes up in public comment, in fact, our board laws direct, that public comment is not for questioning board members or staff. It's for comment. That's the general purpose. Now, if someone makes a comment on an agendized item that provokes a board member to say, well, that's a good point, and, you know, that, that happens. But there's no requirement that every public comment, and every person has the right to, you have the right to ask questions, but we've got to conduct our business, okay? In terms of the agenda order tonight, the, I did give, together with the superintendent, and it's my job to set the agenda item. So if you don't really, if you really hate the order, yes, I'm to blame. But the ECCL item, which I think most of you are here for, is informed by the items that are coming before it, including the item discussing the direction and goals of the district, the multi-year projections, less so on the student engagement piece. But we have students here to talk about the student engagement piece, and they have to go do homework. So they have priority on their items. So that's, if you'd like, we can, I have no problem with moving the ECCL item ahead of number seven, or ahead of number six. But I assume people might have wanted to talk on both. So anyway, that's, I will defer to Mr. Pats if he wants to flip those two. I would support such motion. Other than that, we do have, this is probably a good time to say, we have signup sheets on the table over there. Some of you folks have already signed up. Because we'd like to get a count, particularly on items six and seven. Who wants to talk? How many people do we have to talk on each item? So we can do that in an orderly way. So if you want to talk on item six and seven, please sign up on the signup sheets over there, so we can conduct that portion of the meeting in an orderly. Thank you. Is there any other comment on action item one around district goals? Okay. Do we have a motion?
And this is to adopt?
To adopt at this time, these four goals.
The present, four goals to the, for the district for the next three years, I guess that's what the plan was?
Yes, as our strategic action goals.
That would be my motion. Did you get that, Lisa? I'm sorry. Work with me, y'all. My motion is to adopt the one through four goals as a direction for the next four years, or three years, excuse me.
I will second.
A roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Pats?
No.
Member Dice?
Yes.
President Affeldt?
Yes.
The next item is multi-year projections. Presentation from our fiscal finance director, Dora Sue.
Ready? I'm here tonight to show you two versions of the multi-year projection. The one is said second interim is an old one that we presented to you back in the February 2015 for the second interim. On this particular multi-year projection, you will see if we do not do anything, we keep on spending. The way that we are doing it right now, you will see in the 1617, we are not going to make the 4% reserve.
Do you have a document to project on the screen? Because we're not seeing it if you do.
Lisa, do we have the multi-year on the projector?
No, we don't.
She makes copies.
Okay. All right. Are there hard copies for members in the audience? All right. All right, go.
Continue?
Yeah, continue, Dora.
All right, the second multi-year projection is what's new. And it's based on the savings in order to make the 4% reserve. And you can see the ones that highlighted in green are the changes that we make in order to make the 4% reserve. But again, overall, you can see clearly on the multi-year projection for this new one, are we still in a healthy fiscal position? The answer is no. Even though we make the 4% reserve, you can see we are still in deficit spending in 1516 and 1617.
All right, Ms. Sue, so just to translate for folks who don't have paper in front of them, the current 1415 second interim budget is showing a $663,000 deficit for 1415, right?
Yes.
Increasing to $871,000, and then $990,000, if we keep spending at our current levels. $990,000 by 201617.
That's right. If we do not do anything and keep on spending what we are doing, in 1617, we will be in negative $990,000. That's correct.
Because we won't have the minimum 4% reserves that the state requires us to have in order to remain solvent.
That's right.
And then you've proposed an alternative multi-year projection, which has some savings built into it, which show next year a $635,000 deficit instead of an $870,000. So about $235,000 or so difference.
That's right.
And that same savings carries on into 1617. So we're on, $750,000 instead of $990,000 in 1617. And with those changes, we would get a positive, what's known as a positive certification from the state?
We will get a positive certification, because we are making the 4% minimum reserve.
Yeah, okay.
So the basic message of the final is that we have to do something if we're going to make the reserve?
That's right.
But, and, yeah, I mean, these are still pretty large deficits, even with these current savings. So we have two options. Either we cut, 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 cut more, or we increase revenues by either increasing enrollment and/or increasing outside support, whether that's grants, federal, state, private, non-private.
That's correct. I think our priority really needs to be, which is, I think, really one of the reasons we're looking at the new ECCL project. We have to increase enrollment, particularly at sixth grade and higher. And so it's imperative for us that we do whatever we can to continue to offer strong programs. You know, at the new facility, we're going to be offering new technology, and a lot of, and the benefit of having that site with the city. So, but really, a lot of it does come down to enrollment for us, as well as, as you said, seeking out additional outside funding and grants. We have a long history of grants in the school district in previous years that have not continued in recent years. And we did hold on to staff. We, I know, we made decisions over the year to keep staff, and that has impacted the general fund over the years. So, and I know the economy was south for the last couple of years, so that didn't help. Because I don't believe corporate America felt like giving as much to school districts and systems. So it is also imperative for us to seek additional grant funding as well.
And then another point. Another point that I want to make is even we meet the 4% in 1516 and 1617, 4% reserve is even less than one month of our payroll. So even for the 4%, in my eyes, they should be increased, even to close to 10%.
Okay. Other board member comment, or questions on this item?
Again, I look at the dollar amounts, and we're looking at cuts upwards of $100,000, if I'm reading this correctly. But it brings me back to my earlier point. We need to stop spending money on things that don't impact the classroom, things like Townsend Public Associates. I remember sitting up here, oh, I don't know, eight or nine months ago, and we were looking, chasing outside monies, and we spent $15,000 to look into setting up a shell corporation. And I want to be, I want to be very clear, at that time, I spoke out against that, and this is the reason why. Is we operate on very thin margins, and it's really critical that every dime matters. And so when I stand up here, or sit up here sometimes, and say, hey, don't go to DC, don't do this, this is the reason why. We don't have any extra funds for things, and if we're chasing dollars, there's no, there's no grants. There's no, it's increasing enrollment, it's providing a quality education, that's how we're going to balance the budget. You know, we've cut as much as we can. So when I say, oh, we shouldn't have Townsend, this is why. So, and I'm sorry to make people wait.
I think, you know, from the second interim, and you're telling us that we were looking from, in terms of a qualified position and having to do a third interim, it definitely, oh, look, thank you, definitely is quite alarming, just in general. I mean, it seems like we have more than even any changes in terms of the model that has been presented, it's still not enough cuts. And so even a, whatever, any small, I mean, we literally have to do a sweep of everything in order to figure out what is the best move forward. So it is definitely an ADA, as we, I think we had a, you provided a summary in terms of enrollment a few months back. And I think that is the, that's the issue. I mean, it's honestly, it's the issue, and it's a K-12 issue. So I think we have to, as Member Pats mentioned, in terms of the quality of the educational program, definitely is that. But it's also trying to galvanize all of our resources in general. But it all comes back to the fact that we did have a number of grants that were funded from different organizations that are no longer here. And we did, we did decide to keep the staff, hoping that that would, money would come out of somewhere. I don't know what the thinking was at the time. But the reality is, is that we do have these sharp pains, and from the picture that you provide, we're looking at insolvency, not this coming school year, but the next school year. And that means that the county is looking at us, you know, in June, July 1st, when we are bringing the budgets, unless we do something. So I'm hoping that, you know, with, I think with the direction from the board, even tonight, that that's something that can be brought forward to the board. We just don't have the time to consider too many options, because, you know, I've seen this before on the other side, being a participant. And I'm sure many residents who are here this evening have seen the district being receivership. It's not a place that is healthy for staff, it's definitely not a place healthy for staff, and it's definitely not a place for students. So whatever decisions that have to be made, will be tough ones, but they have to be made, so we have to have some options.
And just to let you know, the upcoming timeline, because of our qualified certification in the second interim, we are required to do a mandatory third interim, and the cutoff is April 30th, and to be presented to the board in the month of May, because it technically is supposed to be done to the county office before June 1st. So next month, I will be doing a third interim presentation. With more accurate information being changed, it's going to change. For example, it's the P2 attendance data. The staff are working on the P2 attendance this week, as it's due to the county at the end of tomorrow. So we will have a better figure on actually what's going on with the enrollment. How are we doing? Are we better, or are we worse? So by the end of this week, we will know.
And just to clarify for folks, a third interim, you mean, we have to do a third budget, as it were, proposed budget?
That's right.
And that's what we, we need to get those figures right, and we have to do that by June 1st, is what you're saying?
That's right.
Based on actuals through April 30th?
April 30th, yes, yes. And next month, we will be working on the next year's school budget. Because again, the LCAP budget, the next school adopted budget, all supposed to be done before July 1st.
I did have a meeting yesterday at the Department of Finance for my day job, not for district stuff. But it, and the, there will be more money than there currently, the January budget and the May revise. California economy has done well enough, so there will be some more money. But it's not going to be enough to deal with, you know, all of this. Member Miriam?
Yes, question pertaining to the number, as you're speaking of the ADA or enrollment numbers. What are these, the budget figures based off of as far as the enrollment number, just an aggregate total?
Right now, for the two versions that you're looking at tonight, they are still based on the enrollment number that presented at the second interim.
Do you recall what that was?
795 is the enrollment number.
And that's set by the state, not by us, right?
Six eighty-seven or something.
That's the ADA, but the enrollment is 795.
Okay. So the, again, the difference is, we may have 795 students who say they're going here, but they miss days.
That's right.
So ADA is the actual days, and we only get paid for the actual days they come.
And just to let you know, the third interim going to be presented next month, it's going to base on the actual P2 attendance.
And P2 is just, that's February 15th, and ten, or, that says a certain date?
I believe it's the end of March, but I'm not 100% sure.
This is, this a discussion item. Is there any other board comments before we open it up for public comment on this item? Thank you, Ms. Sue. Any public comment on this item?
Thank you, President Affeldt, members of the board. My name is Brian Carver. I appreciated Board Member Miriam's question, because I had the same one, to understand what the enrollment numbers are that this was based on. Because I think it's become clear through the conversation that the school districts get paid based on the number of students that are enrolled, and it even comes down to the number of days attended, right? And I think we've received the phone calls in the past reminding us to be on time to school, because there's a financial impact for the school for this. So maybe that's now clear to everyone here. But what's also stands out to me, right, about this projection, is that if it is based on an enrollment number of nearly 800, that's what we've designed ECCL to hold at a maximum capacity. And so this projected budget is one that says, if you only have a district that enrolls the maximum that the ECCL can hold, then you have a district that will be $1 million in the hole. And it is not financially feasible to only enroll 800 students in this district, at least with current spending. Sure, you can make lots of cuts, but I don't know anybody here who wants to see more cuts to the programs in our district. Everybody here probably wants more things and more programs. And so it's And so it's, we're going to have more opportunity to talk about this later, but I, I think Mr. Affeld was right in saying that this item informs the subsequent items, and it shows that actually the imperative nature of the resolution before you tonight, because you just financially cannot run a district with only 800 students. Thank you.
Just to respond to that, the enrollment, I don't think is 795, I mean, we, we should get that. The high school is about 187, I don't know, superintendent knows the numbers, but we, you know, we have capacity for 220 or something, for example, at ECCL.
Yeah, we, we're going to have a lot, we're going to have plenty of room for additional students, that's correct, particularly at the secondary level. Mr. Baker, I don't recall the number offhand for capacity for EC, do you know roughly? Okay. I'll have to double check and bring it back to the board.
All right. It's a, it's an important point, Mr. Carver, obviously, it's an important point, so we should get that. I'm sorry, sir, did you? Okay, do we have any other public comment on this item? Okay. The next item is E...
Direction wise?
Yeah, in terms of bringing us some options?
I, I think it's, I think he's exploring options. Obviously, we, we need, we need options that are going to give us a positive certification.
Okay. I will, I will, under your direction, I will be bringing recommendations to our next board meeting to determine how we can effectuate this, these changes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baker, we're on to item three, ECCL update.
Oh, good evening, I'm here to give the monthly update on the progress of the ECCL project. First, just, because I knew there are a lot of guests here tonight, just an orientation of the project, you'll see on the screen here, on the lower left-hand corner is the high school, what we call Building D. In the middle, at the bottom, is the administration building, which we call Building B. On the right-hand corner is the community building, which we call Building A. The building that is adjacent to the field, sort of in the middle of the screen, is the K-8 school, which we call Building C. And at the top, the renovated gym and pool facility is what we call Building E. So design and construction update. Construction is going quite rapidly, for those of you who've driven by and seen the project. Site utility progress continues, that's all the, the water and power and sanitary lines in the ground. The gym, Building E, structural work is just about complete now, that's the seismic upgrade, which is funded by a FEMA grant. The gym expansion is in progress, that's the addition to the existing gym on the east side of that building. The high school steel erection is complete, was completed actually about four weeks ago, and that's the two-story building that you see at the corner of 50, excuse me, 53rd and San Pablo. High school slab roof work, roof decks and welding is in progress. The community building, Building A, the foundations are now complete, and we're just about, in fact, actually tomorrow, we pour the slabs on that building. Building B, the administration building, foundations are nearing completion, and the K-8 school, foundations are, are well underway. There are a couple of design activities which we've been working on, the first is the pool renovation, those bids come in next week for the renovation of the pool. And also the health center, we've been working with Alameda County Health Agency and Lifelong, who's the operator, and we've completed the, the small amount of revisions they have wanted to make as the operator to the health center. This is a, once, every month, I give an eight-week look ahead, which is the schedule, I won't go into the detail, but it shows the, the current activities and the activities coming up. By the end of May, you'll see the framing completing on the two, on Buildings A and B, and then June, Building C. So by the time that June rolls around, all the new buildings will be, the frames will be all constructed. A few photographs now, these were taken last week when the, when this report went to the board, so we've progressed past this. This is the inside of the gym, which is our staging area for the gym renovation, so you can see all the subcontract equipment, you can see the ceiling also, where we are replacing missing insulation, and there'll, there'll be a new ceiling that goes in there. This is, shows the seismic upgrade work, so where we have openings, we've had to add the steel beams that you see here, and also some reinforcing bar, and you'll see in the, in the walls there. This shows framing work, all the demolition was completed a while ago, and we're actually starting now to complete the mechanical electrical plumbing, and then completion of framing and drywall in this, in these areas. These are the rooms back, the kind of back of the house, back from the gym. This is the north addition, excuse me, the, the east addition, so you'll see that gravel there, that's the base rock for the new slab, which we're about to pour. In the background, you can see the concrete truck, which is pumping concrete into the foundations. Once we get the slab in place, we'll start framing up the outside of this building. You'll see two new concrete walls to the right, those are new seismic shear walls, to provide added seismic safety for the school. This is the new K-8 school, this is the first concrete pour, the concrete goes in three phases. This is what we call the, the slurry pour, then we place reinforcement bar, we pour the foundations, then we pour the slab. So this shows a little bit, a couple of days later, where our actual reinforcing bar is actually in now over that, and also you can see those pipes come up out of the ground, those are all the electrical conduits for power for the new building. Here's a somewhat artistic shot through the reinforcing bar, the, the K-8 school has to be at high, very high seismic standards, so we have a lot of reinforcement in the foundation, and this now has actually been poured full of concrete. Here, this, this shows pouring the foundations in the Building B, which is the admin building, so you can see at the bottom there, we've got our first concrete pour, our reinforcing bar, and now they're pumping concrete into the foundations. And here it shows what that looks like when that concrete pump truck comes. And then this is a couple of days later, when those have now been poured. So you see there is a reinforcement bar that's still sticking up, that will be once we'll pour the slab, once we, we'll form for that and pour the slab, that'll be the first ground, the first floor for that building. Over Building A, which again is the community building, we're, we're getting ready to pour the slab, this was taken a week ago, and actually that pour is taking place tomorrow, and a couple, over a couple of days, and so that'll be poured up to, there's actually a mesh that goes in there, which is not in this photograph yet, that goes in, and then the slab is poured. So once that happens, we'll be, start, we'll start framing for, for Building A, the admin building. Most exciting news, of course, is Building D, the high school. This shows all the structural steel work complete, which again was, was erected, erection completed about three or four weeks ago. We're now starting to put in the, the floor deck and the roof deck, you'll see at the top there, that's the roof deck, and shows the first and second floors of the building. This is the underside of the first floor, so this is the new first floor of the high school, that shows the, the, the second floor deck up above. You'll see the light kind of coming through those holes, just because we have yet to put down reinforcing bar, and then concrete to pour that slab. We've started putting stairs in and miscellaneous metal elements, and this is the, the, there's a main stair that, that has not yet been built, this is the secondary stair for exiting. So those elements are starting to go in, and you'll see, what you see below is all the foundations poured. Once we have all the welding and bolting done, there'll be a new floor slab that gets poured there, and that'll be the, the new first floor of, of the high school. We've also worked on furniture, furniture fixtures and equipment. We've just about completed confirming the data telecommunication, audiovisual and security systems. That technology changes rapidly, so we've done a review with the district and city IT staff to make sure we've got the most current state-of-the-art systems being installed. The furniture program was completed about a month ago. We're procuring the furniture in three phases. The first is for the gym and pool, because that opens first, then the high school, and then Buildings A, B, and C, which includes the K-8 school. Our furniture procurement, we're using what's called a piggyback contract for the majority of it. This allows the district, in California, if you're a school district, you can purchase furniture from any other district in the state. That allows us to take advantage of large districts, like, say, even Los Angeles or Sacramento, and who will bid out furniture, and then we can purchase it at the price that it was competitively bid. This allows us to choose furniture from any of these contracts throughout the state, and it provides, really provides the best value for the district, and this is a methodology many districts use, and which we have had great success with. We will have a few unique items, such as volleyball nets, which we are currently doing, bidding out, that need to be competitively bid because they're not in one of these, these contracts. You'll see a chart here that may, may be familiar with, it's a graphic schedule, kind of get, everything in the gray is complete, and now we're, we're into the yellow phase. Right about now, we're about one-third through the construction contract, with about two-thirds to go, and you'll see the kind of three phases. You'll see furniture is being, again, procured and installed in three phases, so this summer, we will, right now, we're, right now, we're procuring the furniture for the gym, this summer, we'll install the furniture for the gym, and then the gym pool will open, and the fall, late fall, we'll be, we will install the furniture in the high school, and then the high school move takes place in December, and then in early, the first half of, of 2016, we'll install, we'll install the furniture for the other three buildings, including the K-8 school, and then move in, kind of a phase move in as those buildings completed between March and June. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Baker? No. What's that?
If we could just get a copy of the slides, that's it.
Yeah, this should have been, this was in your board packet.
It wasn't, it wasn't posted.
No.
With our board packet.
Uh, okay.
We'll get these pictures.
Yeah. And it's after the meeting, but it, maybe you could put it online, in case people want to go get it. Ms. Tameri, is that possible? All right. Are, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, onward. We're, we've removed item four, so we're on to item five. The next item is, yes? Okay, is it?
I just want to make a correction. Earlier, I kind of mentioned enrollment for this year is 795, actually, the number should be 695, and the ADA is 646.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, all right, that sounds right. Okay, the next item is, is a, a proposed board policy on student engagement in the local control accountability plan. It's not an action item. I brought it to the board for discussion, and it largely comes from and was inspired by our own Emory students, who, who helped to draft the concepts behind it. And we committed at our June 12th meeting that we, well, the superintendent then, Sugiyama, committed, and the, and the board supported that commitment, that we would come back and adopt a board policy around student engagement, around the LCAP, and very few districts have done this in the state. We have some students here tonight, including our student member, Brea, would you like to come and kind of discuss the motivation behind the student engagement policy? Introduce yourselves, please.
Sure. My name is Brea Williams, I attend Emory High School as a sophomore, and I am also a member of the board, and a member of Youth Together organization.
My name is Leah Mohammed, I'm a junior at Emory High.
Speak in the mic, please.
Sorry. My name is Leah Mohammed, I'm a junior at Emory High, and I'm also part of Youth Together. So we're here because we wanted to, because we think that it's essential for student input to be encompassed in the LCAP process, because we have firsthand experience with the kinds of policies that are voted on and implemented here. And we wanted to say that student leadership is key to quality education for all students.
So, a couple of things that we had talked about the first time we proposed the proposal is, we had a couple of demands, but the demands weren't harsh, and they weren't rude and cruel, they were just demands to help us understand the, how the LCAP works. So a couple of our demands, I don't directly remember them all, but it says at least one student on every committee that Emoryville has, because it's important for student leadership, as my partner Leah had said, for us to, like, it's important for us to know what we're talking about and, and understand how the LCAP works. Another demand that we had was student-friendly language in every single piece of document that came out, because usually, when you come to talk about the LCAP with students, no one knows what it is, or when you give us something, we don't understand it because of the language that is used, and it's not used for K through 12 language. And we feel that it's more important for us to be able to understand it, because it is used towards us. And lastly, before we go, our last demand, oh, there's further demands in the policy, if you like to read that, but it says student-friendly hours for the meetings, because most of the meetings do go around the times where we're, we're like getting ready for school the next day, or we have to do homework, and homework is a big necessity for graduation, keep your grades up, so it's, it's really important for us, and that's pretty much why we're here, we just wanted to refresh our, your, the board's memory, and let everyone else know while we're here, just in case you weren't here the first time we came. That's all.
Okay.
Any questions?
I have some questions for you.
Oh, I'm, I'm back now, basketball season over.
Where you been? On this, the, one of the things that the students proposed last year was really committed, in essence, in the policy, that, that students would help with five sessions or focus groups to gather input from your fellow students.
Yes.
And, and further assist with two parent forums during the year.
Yes.
So my question is, can you guys deliver on that? Is that still, do you have the capacity to do that, or is that, maybe you were feeling energetic last year?
I would say that, I'm sorry, I would say that we don't have the same means that we had last year to organize the same way, but we fully, we're fully willing to do that still, we just need to, we, we need to work on it, it's, we've regressed a little bit, so, yeah, we can.
Should we keep those numbers in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and, and last year, I, I brag about the work you guys did last year, and, and you bragged about it to the state board in, in July, I guess it was. But you gathered input from, I think it was 36% of the students, at least the high school students.
Yes.
On what they wanted to see in the, in the LCAP, and, and many of those things got in. Now you've committed to 50%, is that, is that a number we should keep in there? That's, that would be great, I think the 36%, you're already higher than probably any high school in, in the state.
Well, so far as this year goes, we feel like you should keep the numbers in, because we are fully committed to unders, to making sure that everyone at Emory or in NEAT understands what the LCAP is, and it's amazing that we're at 50%, but we do feel that we can get higher, and we just need to keep working at it. So don't take us out, don't take the numbers out, but keep them in, we're dedicated to keep going.
Okay. Don't, don't sit down just yet, because maybe you have some further thoughts, but I had some questions for the superintendent, which is that the, you know, you've had a chance to review this, are there, do we have the capacity to deliver on our end? And I'm thinking about trainings to students, translation of some of these education materials and documents to students in understandable language, even, even English.
Spanish, or Spanish, yeah.
That's, that's in there too, that's in there too. But I've just, even English, translating the education ease is, is something we need to deliver on.
I, I think we would make every effort to do that, I, I think that-
I think that, you know, this is one of those situations where we've, you know, as you know, we've also cut a lot of staff here at the district this year in order to try to help us with our budget situation, but I would be committed to helping with this effort in any way I can. But we might, we might need a little bit of outside help if possible, I don't know.
And we also have Ms. McDonald here who's gonna be helping with the LCAP, is that right?
Yes.
And so she has hopefully some capacity to help.
Yes.
Is that, do you see tasking her with some of the student district responsibilities? How would we do that?
It's possible, it, we're tasking her with everything right now because she's, which will eventually put her over the brink at some point. But a big part of her role is the LCAP piece, as is the high school programming and work that we're working on today. So, I think it's possible. I just, I would need to do some planning with Ms. McDonald first around it to see what's doable.
Okay, so you'd like to, to think about how to implement this and do you, are there, this is your opportunity and you can say, let me think about it some more, but to identify pieces in here that you think are not doable, we don't have the capacity, or you want to think about how we can do it.
I would need to look at it, I would need to look at it over with Ms. McDonald some more and think about what we've got. Just getting, making sure we're facilitating the LCAP process with the parents and the teachers and students, which I think is important. In general, even if we weren't doing everything in here, it's going to be difficult for our timeline. So I would need to evaluate this a little closer with Ms. McDonald. But I'm certainly, my heart is committed to seeing this happen because I think it's important. So anything I can do to do this, I will do.
Okay, I've got one more question, at least for you guys, but maybe some of my fellow board members do. You propose two representatives per grade level, eight through 12, to be on a student advisory committee. Is that, is that still a good number? Is that the right grade span?
We think two might be a little much right now, but we definitely want that to happen. We want the committee and we want us to be able to share information with each other, but two per grade level might be not the number we're thinking of.
Should it be one to two?
One to two, per grade level.
For now and kind of think about moving that up later.
And of course, the students would be voting in, on how, on who we want to sit at the, on the board per grade level.
Okay, and can you reach down into the eighth grade? Are you still, I know you're doing some work with the eighth graders last year.
Yeah, I think the eighth grade is important because they will be the freshmen's next year at the high school, so, of course.
Great, great.
But that's something, I can't make that decision. We'll talk about it as a group and get back to you next time.
Okay. Other comments, questions from other board members?
No, I was just, I'm just really excited because I think you guys deserve that seat. That's why I'm so glad you're here this evening. I know meetings aren't always the easy thing to do when you have homework and other commitments, but I do agree with this being brought forward and glad that you're representing it because I think it's really important to ensure that student voice is represented in everything and it's not only should be, it's supposed to be, so it's a requirement. So I think even though we may have some difficulty implementing, I do want to see this move forward toward, you know, an action and something that the board can revisit and, you know, ensure and definitely the person at that seat could, you know, keep us honest on that. So I look forward to it coming back to us for, you know, for certain, to make sure that, you know, that issue that you raised last year and you all did a wonderful job doing it and that you're still holding it, that is something that we could act on from a policy standpoint and support your efforts and your desire to get information. So, I appreciate that.
Just, just real quick, one, Brea, we miss you. And two, just take a moment to remind yourselves and to look at what you're doing because it's a big deal that you're being involved and it's very hard when you're in the work to lose the fact that you are, you are doing something really big and beyond yourselves and that deserves some credit. So just, I'm reminding you to take that moment at some point to be like, this is pretty cool that I'm involved. It's, this affects the students more than anybody else, so it's great that you're involved in your speaking on behalf of your peers, so, good job.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Okay, do we have any, thank you. Do you have any final parting thoughts or comments?
I'll be back next board meeting.
All right. Great. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay. Yes.
I'm short. Well, hello, good evening. My name is Nikita Mitchell. I currently work for OUSD Meaningful Student Engagement Office. I also support LCAP student advisors in Oakland Unified and I'm also a part of Youth Together. And so I just wanted to come up here and share that what the students are presenting is a part of a statewide initiative to get more student voice and how our resources are directed. And so, you know, I also want to offer Youth Together up and my office specifically for cost knowledge exchange, if you want to continue to think about and build out a plan to bring student engagement to this very critical initiative. So, I wanted to offer up that as a resource and say thank you for considering that.
Great, thank you. Now, one question for you, since you offered. I believe Oakland is one of the few districts in the state that has adopted a student engagement policy. Can you send that to our superintendent so that we have that to look at as well?
I definitely can.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. So, I guess this is the time to ask the board if there's general support to direct the superintendent to take this proposed policy and, you know, bring it back to us as an action item?
I would agree with that.
It's just a discussion item, so I think we're just here for kind of a direction. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, well, we gotta do the LCAP by June 30th, so I think we want, we probably need it back at at least the second May meeting.
Or at least policy-wise. I mean, policy comes after, as long as there's effort, but policy-wise, I just want to make sure we get something in our, in front of us.
Yes, the second May meeting? Well, I guess, I think two things should be going on at once and the, the work can be going on before we actually see the policy and finally adopt it. So, I think we do want to see a student advisory committee and, you know, at least one student in grades eight through 12. And so, I think it would be wise to get that in motion, even if we haven't formally adopted it as a policy, is my sense of the direction of the board. Yeah, and that, you know, that we see the policy back probably in the May meeting, one of the May meetings.
Got it.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, students. Onto item six. Yeah, we're going, Member Pats, do you want to present this item and?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief because I think this item's just up for discussion this evening. So I'd like, excuse me, public comment, but I brought this to the board because we, I've been concerned about how we're handling funds. I have been approached by a few people who have raised funds for our students either through grants or donations to their classrooms and they have had difficulty in accessing those funds. And I have sort of been pressing Dr. Rubio to sort of give me an accounting of what's going on and that didn't happen, so I've dug into it a little bit more. And then about a month ago, when we had our first interim, there was a charge item of $9,800 from the Emory Ed Fund that was pledged to us but not paid. And so I got even more concerned. At our board retreat, the Ed Fund came and presented and I don't want to stand up here and kick the Ed Fund. I think they have a purpose and they, and I'll talk about that in a moment, but all they were able to talk about at our board retreat was the audit, the audit, the audit. And that actually falls on us. Ed Code is very specific that if there are any student funds, we are required to pay for the audit and not have it come out of those funds, but at the board retreat, it was made clear there was some sort of maintenance cost in using the Ed Fund. And that's really not the Ed Fund's role. The Ed Fund was founded sometime in the 90s and its purpose, and its purpose, I think, should continue to be, was to provide funds for individual students, the one thing we as a board or as a district cannot do. You know, the Ed Fund is there, it can raise money and it can give scholarships to graduating students from Emory, which is what it has done in the past. It should not be there to manage school funds and/or to be our conduit for donations to the school. On both versions of the school website, of the district website, there's a big advertisement for them and it really, those funds should come to us. It's kind of our charge, according to how I read Ed Code, that we need to be responsible for gifts made to the district. It shouldn't go to, we shouldn't direct people to an external entity. And so really, that's what I'm asking for, is I'm asking us to meet our responsibilities and control our donations to classes and to teachers and more importantly, student activity funds. And then, you know, we might as well take advantage of the fact that we're a public school and get, you know, if a large corporation wants to give us money, we should be able to take that and not have to give 10% to an outside entity that may or may not return the funds to us in a timely fashion. So, that's really, that's really my, in a nutshell, resolution. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Member Pats. Do we have questions or comments from board members?
I guess, so this is more, so is this more in terms of changing, are any, I guess, arrangements with having specific accounts, which I think is what you expressed in terms of student accounts or different, the various accounts?
Yeah.
Which I do know was an issue for the district at a point in time and the Ed Fund took that on and built that, that trail for us that we needed at the time. But I think, I don't know that it was ever anything, I think, actually, I can't, I'm sorry, I don't have history pulled dramatically out of my brain, but I do think that at a time when our audits were not clear, our district audits were not clear, that's probably where that need and that fit happened for us. But I don't see that being, I mean, I don't personally see as an issue of us pulling that piece back in as long as we are set up and ready to run that part. And not that we necessarily have that, you know, room to waffle on that, but I mean, essentially, we need to make sure we have systems in place in order for us to do it effectively without that being on our audit trail ourselves again. So I don't, I don't have an issue with that component, that, you know, I don't have a question or anything, but I think it's just more about just seeking clarity if that was a main staple of that, I guess.
I would hope that for the $2,000 or $3,000 that we generate in student accounts, that we can manage that fund at least as well as we do a $65 million construction project. That'd be my sort of take on that. And I think that would be, you know, I don't know, that to me should be the minimum standard. If we can't handle that, then maybe we.
No, but you know, I think it's a little different. I just, not to go back and forth, but I think it's a little different because we're talking about cash. We've had similar issues with cafeteria funds before, just because of cash handled. So, I mean, it's not as simple as, you know, I get it. I don't want to argue the point, but I think it's, the reality is that there's a different, you know, you have students giving cash to certain, so you have to have structures in place. So my only, my only question to staff, really, is in order for us to do, and I don't know that it requires a resolution, but you know, in order for us to do is make sure that we have the right systems in place in order to manage the, you know, those things again because we didn't have them. They haven't been on our audit, for instance, because we haven't been responsible for those, but they're going to come back and we've, and I've seen a number where that's been areas of concern by auditors because of the fact that it's cash and it makes sense, so.
So I think my two thoughts on that, and I don't want to go back and forth, is I don't think we have a choice. I think Ed Code makes it pretty clear that we have to manage that and we have to cover the audit costs. And then the only reason I'm doing a board resolution is I'm not able to direct staff individually. It has to come from us.
It's a little conversation here.
And so, yeah, so it's, and I can't talk to you guys individually, so the only path left to me was resolution. So, but yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, there's another path. You can, you can request to me and the superintendent or either one of us, can we have this as a discussion item? And these are the issues and this is what, so I think it's somewhat.
I tried that method and failed.
Yeah.
So I took it to more extremes.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I made requests.
Well, we can, we can disagree.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, you know.
Yeah.
Anyway, the, the, well, I do have some questions, but why don't you go ahead?
I just have a quick question and forgive me for not knowing exactly what Emory Ed Fund, if this is how it's set up, it's just how I see someone who's trying to raise funds for a school or an organization, I would just not want to lose having somebody cheerleading on our behalf. And whether we feel that Emory Ed Fund is doing that or doing that well or doing that enough is a separate issue. I'm just saying, I'm all for what you're proposing, I just don't want to lose somebody who is going to cheerlead on behalf of our school district.
And I agree with you and I think that's why I put in the resolution that we encourage them to continue doing the great work that they're doing, so.
So have you talked to anyone at the Ed Fund about this?
You know, the only person who came was not very helpful, so, you know, it's, again, I think this is.
Who came to our meeting?
Yeah, that was really, I think that, the impression I had of the Ed Fund was worse after they presented than before. You know. It was clear, they made it very clear, they no longer have staff, you know.
Well, it's my understanding, because I've talked to folks there.
And you are, you are part of the Ed Fund.
Yeah, in name I am. I haven't, there've been no meetings called, so I haven't participated in any functional thing.
That's the problem.
Yeah. The, but I've talked to them about it and they actually, and I've had the same question, why, why as a parent would I give money to and then they take 10% and then they give, so. And the Ed Fund, over time, has changed. Sometimes they've been, you know, understaffed, sometimes they were raising hundreds of thousands of dollars because people didn't want to give it to the district and didn't trust the district when the district was in receivership.
Right.
And it was an important external mechanism to raise money and they, you know, if you're raising that kind of money, then you do need staff and you need to cut. If you don't have staff, then it doesn't, 10% doesn't make sense to me. And if you're not raising a lot of money, then you don't, you don't need staff necessarily. But, in any event, on this particular item, I guess, the Ed Fund is, in the past, when they had staff, they were willing to take on some of these accounts for the reason, it's my understanding that Member Dice said, the cash stuff was becoming a problem and it was a service, actually a service to the district. They no longer have the staff and they are fine and would rather not maintain the PTO accounts, the student accounts. So, as I understand it, that they're happy giving that up and sending it back to the district, which my question to the superintendent is, you know, do we have the capacity to handle that? If that's, if that's the case and, you know, can we, can we do that?
Just specifically responding to that question by itself, yes, we have the capacity to do that.
So, I'm a little troubled. If they haven't met, how do we know they have well? I just, I find it interesting that they, you know, there's not a board meeting. It, you make it sound like it's a single person and that concerns me, that it's, you know, it should be, I think the city has a board, has a person on the panel, we have people on the Board of Directors. So I'm troubled, or is Brian, when you need him, talking about the Brown Act. So I'm, I'm, I'm troubled, or is Brian, when you need him, talking about the Brown Act. I'm troubled that, that we have that level of authority with what the Emory Ed Fund is able to do and not do when it hasn't been a running entity and meeting on a regular basis. So that's, that's curious to me.
Well, I don't, I don't, I guess I don't understand that, because what's curious about it, Steve Rasmussen came to our meeting, was very forthcoming.
Right.
And he has been the one person on the ed fund who has been doing all of the staffing of it and figuring out all these accounts and getting everyone paid.
Yeah.
And he's indicated he's more than happy if the district takes that on, so, so...
Great.
That's a big piece, yeah. So if we, that seems like we can do that without a resolution, then we should, and we have the capacity, we should do that. But your resolution also goes along beyond that in all sorts of other directions around having, it seemed to me, restricting the ability of teachers to raise money for their classroom through Donor Choose. You want the superintendent, or the principal, or the, some designated, oversee the Donor Choose funding, and I, I mean, I can tell you, like, I don't support that, and I, are there teachers that are telling you, please get, you know, take away our ability to, to raise money for classrooms? Because I've given money to Mr. Pippin, to Ms. Combs, on Donors Choose for their classrooms, specific projects that they have. I, I don't think we need to, you know, take that over, and there are thousands of teachers in California using Donors Choose and some of these other mechanisms for raising money, crowdsourcing in their classroom. I, like, I don't understand, I guess, why we would get involved in that.
So I'm not, teachers are welcome to raise as much funds as they want and in whatever method they want. It's the accounting of those funds that I'm under the impression ed code holds us responsible for. So this would prevent someone from setting up a Donors Choose account under Emory Secondary Schools name, raise funds, and then go to Tahiti. It would have to go through an entity, and that entity should be the school district. So I don't have any interest in getting involved in teacher fundraising or having the superintendent do it, I'm simply saying we're responsible for the accounting. You know, if they're going to use our name, raise funds for a classroom that we are the entity that oversees, you know, and, and there's tax deductions and things like that, then we have to have an accounting of that money. And so I don't want the ed fund to have the accounting of that money, because I think ed code, and again, I'm not an attorney, I'll defer to legal counsel on that, but I feel that, as I read ed code, we have to maintain an accounting of that, of those funds, both of how it comes in, and more importantly, how that money is spent. So, you know, again, teachers are welcome to raise on Donors Choose, but I don't want that money to have to funnel through the ed fund.
Okay, so, so, so your point about that is, they can raise it directly, you're okay?
Sure.
You just don't want to go through the ed fund?
Well, I, again, it has to go through an entity, and that entity should be the school district.
Yeah, so the, yeah, I read all the ed code sections that you put in here, and as you know, I am an attorney, and, and almost all of them were not particularly pertinent. And there was one that gave us the authority to oversee funds and decide what to do with it, but I guess I didn't, I'm not, I'm not seeing the reading that we have to create some mechanism where the district is doing it. So it may be that we want to ask legal counsel if, if there's something here. There's a student organization piece that talks about student organizations that you seem to be reading, I think, I could be wrong.
Yeah.
To, to just mean any money that's about a student, but that's, that's not what the codes, it's about student organizations like the Student Council or a Student Club, and that, I think, I think you might be reading that more broadly. And if we need to ask counsel, you know, don't take my word for it, let's get, let's get our lawyer to look at it.
It would require some legal expense to review. I, I, I think that the ed code does apply directly to student organizations, but whether that applies to a teacher raising funds in her classroom, it doesn't appear to me to apply to this, but I would, I would have to get legal counsel. So if, if the board is directing me to do that, I can do that.
So I'm sorry, and I'm, I'm now looking at my resolution, and, and I want to be clear, that's talking about funding raising opportunities for the district. I don't talk about classroom funds, I talk about district funds. If you're looking at line nine, therefore be resolved. So right now, Amazon Smile, there's one set up for the ed fund, I would think it'd be nice for there to be one set up for the district, things like that, so, I'm sorry, maybe I...
Okay, the superintendent or principal shall provide for the, I'm looking at eight, for the supervision of all funds raised by any teacher
Oh, I see what you mean.
or staff member for use in their classroom.
Yeah. Okay, so yeah, I think those two things are, again, I'm not a lawyer, so I won't argue with that, but I still think, I feel like, it just seems to me logical, if somebody's raising money in the name of the school, we are on the hook for that, and I would hate to have to reimburse, you know, for something we don't have any control over. You know, I don't know, I think it's, you know, we can talk about our branding or something, but if they're using our name, I feel like that should be something we have some control over. Maybe I'm wrong in that, but...
Okay. Any, any other board comments or questions on this item? Do we have public comment on this item?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy Lewis, I teach second grade at Annie Yates Elementary School. In regards to the Donors Choose, our process has been, if you have a Donors Choose, or if you set up a Donors Choose account, you must say something and let leadership know that they have an account, so they, they are aware that we do have Donors Choose accounts. They send out information to, to the other teachers and other people who are on those accounts to say, hey, this teacher has this project, will you please fund it? The other point of the Emory Ed Fund, it has been an experience going through the Emory Ed Fund and the work that teachers do to reach out and say, please support my students for acting or drama or anything supplemental to our classrooms, and then to actually be rewarded a grant and have that grant held by the Emory Ed Fund, and then when it's time to get those funds, you've got field trips booked, you've got buses coming, or you have people coming in for them to say, we may not have your funds, or there's a problem with the fund, or there's a, there's always been a problem with the Emory Ed Fund, and always been a question about, I mean, there've been years where they have raised a good amount of money, and there's been a lot of questions about how that money is being spent, because when you look down to our classes, it does not reach the children the way that it should be. And that has been a serious concern with the Emory Ed Fund, for the money that they raise and what they're saying that they raise, what actually reaches the children? So that is of serious concern. And even at this point, I received a grant, there is a check, we need to cash it, my kids are ready to go on their next learning expedition, how is that going to happen? The check is with, with accounting, what's the process? We're almost at the end of the year, this is the second time we've gone through this situation. We need to have procedures and protocols for when people give to us and say, hey, we want to support you, we know that teachers spend money out of their personal accounts, we need a process for how that's supposed to happen so that the funds get out and get to the kids. I mean, the kids are the focus here, we need to get the resources to the children. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Audrey Miles, kindergarten. Okay, I'm one of the ones that constantly, for the last four years, have written grants in this district to support after-school programs that cannot be funded through our district because the money's not there. I am a serious grant writer. This year, I wrote grants for over $5,500 that support our theater group, that support our drama club, and other programs, as well as Civic Pride, and as well as our community service project that we run. This student went with me, I provided an opportunity for students that they normally would not have got through theater club, and wrote a grant for an after-school program for, for the middle school kids, so that I took kids sixth through eighth grade to a theater performance in San Francisco to see Newsies, as well as a dinner experience. That grant was written and went through ed fund. Currently, I have another grant that I wrote for my students in my classroom. Monies are not available to me because I've asked, this is the last meeting that we came to, we talked about this, and I have been waiting since January to get this resolved. They said first, there's an audit that needs to happen. After the director left, they said, well, we're going to have an audit, the audit has been done. Dr. Rubio graciously provided me with assistance for my drama program to be able to get monies out, to provide me services for my costumes, because my monies are stuck in ed fund. This is not fair. I worked hard to write a legal grant, okay? I worked hard to make sure that administration signed those grants, Dr. Rubio signed those grants. Not only did I write those grants for me, but I wrote grants for my former students for the second grade because I know how to do it, and I said, I know they're available, I wrote it for me, and I wrote it for all the second grade teachers. This is not fair. They owe me money, why can't I get my money? Dora's working with us right now, trying to figure out, why is it that you tell me that I have my money and it's valid and it's there, but you won't give it to me? I'm supposed to take my kindergarteners on an end-of-the-year trip to a small theater performance and provide a bus. We resolved that the money is there, their own accounting sheet says the money exists, why can't I get my money? If you're saying you no longer want whole student accounts, I can agree with that. According to ed code, the district's supposed to provide us with an account, I don't have a problem with accountability, I have been accountable. What I want is to be made whole, I want my monies in a check, if they need to go to the district, fine, they can write me a check, but I want to be made whole, we have one more month in school, we're looking at the end of the May for a field trip and in, in the middle of June for a field trip. I want this student to address her experience, both in the drama production, which by the way was sold out, we had 37 kids at the performance, anyone who was there, it was an awesome performance, okay? We provided dinner theater for over 200 people, okay? We're doing the work, but we're being penalized. Any other organization that you would go to where you say, I put money in the bank and it's not there, what would you call that? I call it embezzlement, whatever you want to call it, I don't know what you want to call it, but if it's my money and you're not giving it to me, then I have a problem, that's a legal issue to me. So, and my heart and passion is, I've always supported the ed fund, but right now, I'm feeling like, what is my next step if I can't get my money? I am legally responsible to a grant writer, where I have to provide documentation at the end of June to show what I did with my monies. How am I going to do that, Dr. Rubio? I am really concerned, and I still want to be able to provide my students with what they need at the end of the year. Julia, can you speak to your experience, both in drama and your experience with going to the city and seeing a theater performance?
Hi, my name is Julia, I'm in sixth grade. My experience of going to the theater and the restaurant with Ms. Miles in San Francisco was a great experience. She has offered us a lot of opportunities, different places, like Civic Pride, and I've received an award, and we've been given a lot of resources and different things from Ms. Miles, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, Carol Balf, now retired science teacher. I wanted to make, there's, there's a whole bunch of things I want to comment on. One of them is with respect to being able to have funds directly donated and then have the district be able to take care of it so that it can be accessed. Over several years, I've gotten garden grants, et cetera, some of them did come through the ed fund, but we had a lot of donations that were, and plant sales, and we were able, this was before Dr. Rubio, we set up an account in the district accounting system that was for garden donations. Every time we would have plant sales, or we would get donations, I would bring the funds to Dora, she would enter it into the account, and then the district was able to access it. At the time, we had a garden instructor that was paid, and that paid for either, enabled us to be able to pay her and also some of the supplies, et cetera. So we did have a garden front, so I do know that there is some way through accounting that when there are donations, they come to the district. On another note, there is one question I have about when you might need an organization like the ed fund for certain funds. It doesn't have to be the ed fund, however, and that is, there are some funders who, and I think it's probably by some sort of IRS regulations, need to go through a 501(c)(3). And if they have to go through a 501(c)(3) by whatever their requirements are, then you can use an organization like the ed fund, it doesn't have to be the ed fund, as a pass-through organization. Now with that, respect to that, there have been grants, because I've also done a lot of grant writing over the years for science, after-school programs, et cetera. Some of them would go through the ed fund, some would not. Almost always, re, echoing some of the comments both Ms. Miles and Ms. Lewis commented, that often, there would be a problem with getting all or some of the funds when it went through the ed fund. On the other hand, there were times when we got the funds, so it's always been a little dicey. In recent times, I came to the school board last June and talked about a number of grants and things that I had been able to get and that we would be doing work during this year. One of those grants went through the ed fund, was for $22,000 for our summer rap camp. $10,000 of that funds was to be paid to the teachers who taught in the summer program. The district fronted the money because the ed fund had the check in hand for the full thing, and then when we billed the ed fund, in fact, I walked over with the director, handed the check with him to Dora, when she went to cash the check, she was told, no, you can't cash it because the funds aren't there. The district is still in the hole for that $10,000.
Your three minutes is up, now.
The, what I did want to comment, other funds that were in that report that I made are going through Cal State East Bay, a STEM institute, all of those funds have been regularly reimbursed. So it's possible to go through other organizations. I think it's important information for you and the public to be aware of.
Okay. I'm going to comment on that really quickly, because this is a myth that's been, that I've heard a few times. You don't have to be a 403B to be tax deductible, or 40, whatever is that, that charity thing?
501(c).
501(c), there you go, I was close. You don't have to be a, we as a school are an organization that you can donate to, just like a police department, it's, you know, there's an IRS publication on it. It, some large foundations may require it, but it is not in the law. If you give money to a school, it is wholly tax deductible. If you give money to the city of Emeryville, it is tax deductible, talk to your tax accountant. But yeah, this is, this is, this perpetuation that they, we need to have that magic 501(c)(3) is not accurate. We are a public entity for public good, and it's right in the, what you can deduct, you know, if you do your taxes, it's right there, so...
Other public comment? Please identify yourself again.
Hello again, I'm J.J. Tong. I would like to give you perspective as an Emeryville resident, as well as a parent within the school district. My husband and I moved to Emeryville around nine years ago, and we've been here and enjoyed the community quite a lot. When we were here, we didn't have children when we first started here, and I'm an ex-school teacher, and when we decided that we wanted to donate funds somewhere, we thought, why not do it in our current community? We don't have children going here, but we'd really like to support our community where we're living, and so the only place that we need to do that was the Emory Ed Fund. So we did, we donated, and my husband works for a corporation that does do matching, and it was matched. The, the requirements for that matching to comment on the 501(c)(3) piece of that, the, that corporation does require either it to be a school or to have that status for it to be a matching fund. So that was, that happened, but he really wanted to make sure that the funds were directed to the high school at the time. We were interested in making sure that that was, that I was an ex-high school teacher, that that's, that made sense to us, and so we wanted to make sure that that's where it was going, and so he called around, tried to figure... And so, he called around, tried to figure out, you know, can, we just donated this money? Can we say this is where it's going? And basically, there were a lot of non-answers, and if, when we read through the lines, it basically meant, sorry, there's, we're not gonna direct that to anywhere that you care about, and so, thanks for donating, and we moved on. So, fast forward to two children later, a child here at Annie Yates, a child at ECDC, both children through ECDC since they were six months old. And we cannot and will not donate to Emory Ed Fund because we can't determine where our money will be spent, and hearing the teachers tonight, if it will be spent, or if it will even get to the hands of the people who will benefit our children. And so, we won't be donating here until this problem gets fixed. And another thing that's important to know, just to finalize here, is that, you know, as an example, we would like to donate for perhaps a new turf at Annie Yates. I, you know, so, well, it's something that we all see as a need, but if I donate money and I do it through the Emory Ed Fund, I'm not guaranteed that that is where the money is going, and there is no way for me to ensure that even my children are benefiting from that money. And not just them, but their classmates, their peers, and of course, their teachers. And so, until this gets resolved and we can, there's an appropriate place and appropriate processes to make sure that the monies come in and get donated, and if we wish to put them, not just to a general, wherever they're going, I don't know where that is, and go directly to the teachers that need it, then we will refrain from donating here. And so far, and I'm also on the board at ECDC, the Friends Board that is a nonprofit that has the 501 status, and our money does go there because we know exactly where that money is going to be donated, and helping the children there at ECDC.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tong.
My name is Susan Donaldson, and I am a parent and an Emeryville resident. My child at Annie Yates. And I just wanted to add my comment that this information is hideously disturbing as a parent. So, I want to add my voice to this, that, you know, as a school district that struggles with issues of trust and struggles with parent engagement, this kind of information is terribly alarming, to think that teachers can't access funds that parents have donated to them, or that other people have donated to them. That's a terrible thing to hear as a parent. So, I hope that there is some sort of a resolution to this. Terrible.
My name is Ron Henry. I'm a father of three girls, two of which currently go to Annie Yates. I have a, my oldest daughter went to Annie Yates until she got to sixth grade, and because of the lack of middle school programs here, we put her into the Oakland School District. I'd like to kind of relay a couple of my experiences with the Emory Ed Fund. First, I think it's a little ironic that an organization that was set up because of apparently a lack of transparency on the school board itself has a severe lack of transparency. My wife and I, and I know a lot of other people who have gone out and tried to find, what is this, what are we getting for the ten percent that we're paying the Emory Ed Fund? We're certainly not getting a lot of enrichment programs at the school. I think we are getting some scholarships and things for kids, and I think that's great. And I think that they're providing a wonderful service for that. A couple of years ago, though, we had a, we had a pretty strong PTO here, and it was a PTO that had a lot of active members and members who were really interested in going out and motivated to go out into the community and try and raise funds. And at the time, we were told that we were not allowed to go out to, and to basically the retail community within Emeryville, outside of the Emory Ed Fund, and solicit donations and that. That was, we were, we were told that was not the case, that the Ed Fund, that was their job, and we would be stepping on their toes and essentially taking money that could possibly be donated to the Ed Fund. Obviously, they'd be taking away from their ten percent gain, so I can understand that. I also think it's a little strange, so, you know, we have, I have experience now with the Oakland School District, and the school, the middle school that my daughter attends, has an incredible amount of participation and donation from the retail community in the surrounding neighborhood. It's not even close to the retail community that we have here. And I mean, they are getting, they're getting science programs, they're getting music programs, they're getting real enrichment programs, real things that, tangible things that the students are benefiting from. I don't see that happening here. With this, with this huge, again, this huge retail community we have here that we could possibly tap into, and I really see the Ed Fund failing on that. One other thing I'd like to say, I work for a biotech company here in Emeryville, Amorous Biotech, and a couple of years ago, the founder and our public relations executive went out and went to the Ed Fund because they wanted to donate time, they wanted volunteer services and money. Their experience in working with the Ed Fund was awful, and they ended up not, choosing not to, not to deal with the Ed Fund. They actually donated some services outside of the Ed Fund. We donated some time and for homework and some tutoring services and that. But this was all done outside of, outside of the Ed Fund because they, according to them, and I'm not, and I'm not privy to all of the, all of the conversations that went on, but according to the founder of the company, there was, it was just, they couldn't deal with it. So, I would hope that you don't just write off Mr. Patz's resolution. I hope you take it seriously and consider it seriously. I think what he's doing is very honorable. I think he's, he's also, you know, taking a risk by voicing his concern. Obviously, it seems like he's the only one on the board who kind of has this concern. So, thank you, and I hope that you all kind of put a little more thought into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Let me just ask, before you start, are there any other commenters on item six? Okay.
I was continuing.
Yeah, you're, you're on item six, so you can go. I just want to make sure we got all the item six commenters up here and ready to go. Okay. Please proceed.
Hi. Good evening. I have the daughter that's making the noise, so I'm just trying to be of help. Anyhow, I'm a parent. My daughter, she goes to Annie Yates, she's in the sixth grade. So, you know, I, I really enjoy the drama class, the opportunity that Julia had with drama. She was able to do things that most children in her age grade group is not available to do because of the academic-wise. Ms. Miles wrote a grant for all the students, and it was amazing that she had that opportunity, the drama class. She, she was, she played the role of sister in Alice in Wonderland. And the detail she took, the time she took, aside from her regular curriculum that she does during the day, because I have three children. So, two are at Annie Yates, and one is in kindergarten. So, she's used to being with the smaller children. So, I just think she's doing a phenomenal job, and it would be nice if she can get more help. And I, I think she's a great teacher, and she has to write grants and make proposals and have the children write letters to try to help, to support her. But I feel like you guys are the board, you guys should be of some support to her because, after all, we're all here for the children, and you're supposed to be making a way for the children to have a better education. So, I just wanted to speak on her behalf, to say that my daughter, she really enjoyed it, and she also has something to say.
I agree with my mom, and, got it. So, I also agree with my mom, and we also were able to learn a lot more in drama class because when I was, before I began drama class, there was a lot of stuff I didn't know, like, and I was also shy in front of crowds. And, yeah, and then, I have something to add.
That's separate. Yeah, I know. I know. I know.
Okay. So, I've been going to the school, the Annie Yates School, for three and a half years now, and I'm in sixth grade.
Is that our next item?
Yeah. She was talking about, she wanted to speak about, she wanted to speak about her teachers spending their own personal money, and, you know, all the love that they support, they give her, they spend, tell her about the money.
Okay.
That's okay. All right.
You spoke about the funding, and I was interested in that. There were teachers, for example, Ms. Miles and Ms. Johnson. Ms. Miles provided grants for the school, and Ms. Johnson, she also provided supplies, such as other teachers in the Annie Yates Elementary School. And I just feel that they should be able to get the opportunity to, like, get their money back. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. Thanks for coming out.
Hello. My name is Ken Bukowski. I'm a former council member. I've had a lot of experience with the Emory Ed Fund, and I think we could do a much better job if we went out there and we tried to raise the money ourselves here, and you had an annual recognition event where everybody who gave money got, was recognized. It's just, and the city on the TV channel, give to the Emory Ed Fund. Why do we gotta give to the Emory Ed Fund? I know property owners that won't give to the Emory Ed Fund, that would give to the schools directly, so I really think we need to do something about this.
Hi, my name is Brian Carver. I have two children in the district. I just wanted to echo and expand on a couple of the points Mr. Henry made. I think I was active in the PTO at the same time he experienced some of those things. He didn't mention, maybe he didn't want to brag, that he was instrumental in organizing the A's fundraiser that the Dads Club used to do. And I remember during that fundraiser, hearing repeatedly from parents that they, they were interested in participating, but they weren't willing to write a check to the Ed Fund, right? That was what was stopping them from participating in that event. Because I don't know the history, but some sort of distrust got built up over the years, and it was a real obstacle. I also heard some of those same sort of things that he was mentioning, that it seems like the Ed Fund acts as a firewall to keep us from the businesses in town, to keep us from fundraising directly, that we don't, you know, ask them too many times for money or something. And that, and that's just ridiculous, right? We, we need to put a new face on fundraising for the district, and it sounded like to me that the resolution actually gives you the best of both worlds, because it doesn't propose abolishing the Ed Fund, it just says, let the school district also raise funds on its own behalf. And so, that sounds like the right solution to me, because as Mr. Raffelt mentioned, you know, there may be some people who distrust the school district, and they would rather not give to the district. We've had our own financial problems in the past, right? Okay, fine, then let those folks donate to Ed Fund, and let those who aren't sure about Ed Fund, you know, donate directly to the school. I hope you, you will make this a policy and not just some sort of direction to Dr. Rubio to sort out on his own, because, because parents have been told, you're only allowed to do X, or you're only allowed to do Y in the past, we really need the policy written down, right? It needs to be on the website of, here's how things work, and here's what's allowed, and here's what's not. I really liked Philip Powell personally when he was director. I don't know anything about his job performance, but I do know that prior to him, we had a director who apparently rubbed some people the wrong way. I've heard, only rumor, that's all I can report, that, you know, Pixar stopped doing the movie screening because they just couldn't deal with that director, and, you know, and that other businesses in town had the same sort of experience that Ron described with his company, that they tried to work with the Ed Fund for a while and then said, if this is what working with the school district is like, then forget it, I'm not gonna do it. So, we've got to repair those relationships with businesses in town, and I think the only way to do that is to take charge of them ourselves. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. So, we're, I think through this public comment on this item, and this was a discussion item, and I think there's some areas for you to take back and consider, Superintendent, and report back to us in the future about whether, whether and how we can handle the different PTO and student accounts, and whether, whether we, I guess, have a, have a, I guess, what, you know, what in here need, needs to be, or would you recommend be in policy? Because there are, there are some things that, that maybe are more broadly stated, there's some things that legal counsel might want to give us an opinion on, and then there are some things that might not need a resolution, like, I don't think we need to authorize you to go raise money on behalf of the district, and you've done that, and you, you've gotten a recent twenty-five thousand dollar donation directly into the district. So, you can do that. We don't need, we don't need a resolution to do that, but if there's stuff on here that we do need a resolution, then I think you should come back and tell us where we need some policies to, for direction.
I would too.
Is there other, any other thoughts or direction anyone would like to give Dr. Rubio?
I just want to reiterate what you were saying, John, Mr. Raffelt. I agree with the proposal. I just believe it just needs to be vetted better than where, the way it was stated. And, but as far as what the gist of the agreement or the proposal, yeah, I would clear up a lot of miscommunication and add another, I would say, layer of transparency, but maybe clear the air regarding that.
The other thing I would just say for the, for the public, and, you know, I'm not here to defend or not defend the Ed Fund, but I will convey that Mr. Rasmussen at least believes he spent a lot of time with Dora Sue, looking through the accounts, and that, accounts are up to date and people are paid. And I understand Ms. Miles has an issue, so on that front, can you, and Ms. Lewis seem to have two particular issues. So, can we get those straightened out? And I think everyone wants, wants to see the students get their funds. Okay. We are on to item seven, and this is a proposal from Board Member Patz on the Emory Schools and Programs. Would you like to present the proposal?
You know, I'm not sure my talking on the last proposal helped me as much as having public comment on it. I felt like they did a much better job on things than I did, so I'm, I'm almost inclined to do that again, but I do, I do think I need to do some introductions. So, I've been sitting, and again, part of this goes back to the board retreat, part of this goes back to micro soccer, which has been probably the greatest thing in my life this year, meeting parents and talking to families. And so, I've done a lot of sort of reading the history of Measure J and reading about the ECL, and I could not find a resolution that sort of said, hey, we're moving all to one site. And what I did find is a strong concern around sixth grade. You know, we do really good job of enrolling kids at Kinder. We sort of have averaged over sixty kids a year, and they don't make it to sixth grade. They leave around fourth and fifth grade. Our numbers begin to decline and sort of bottom out at sixth grade. Our only saving grace is, as our students leave, who started with us, we begin to get our neighbors in. And what I mean by that is about forty percent of the kids right now at Annie Yates are in an inter-district transfer, but sixty percent at the high school come from out of district. And so, what that tells me is while we creep up a little bit in seventh and eighth grade, we're not seeing people sticking with us. We're having to recruit more people. And so, I threw this on there sort of under twofold. One, I want to, I want to be very clear as to what we're doing with Annie Yates. I got a nice letter from a parent today. She didn't know Annie Yates was scheduled to close. Um, she didn't know Annie Yates was scheduled to close. She was quite taken back by that. Um, and, uh, um, but the other real reason, and, and really important to me is, you know, and I think a couple of parents expressed it today, our middle school program has sort of been an adjunct program. You know, it's, it was part of the high school in the past, and it's now sort of a, added on. And I don't wanna disrespect the middle school teachers who might be here, or the middle school parents. I, I think there is some amazing work going on there. But I also know it's a big red flag. I think we've heard Dr. Rubio, and we've heard the, the talk about sixth grade, sixth grade, sixth grade. There's, there's two points where kids leave our district, sixth grade and ninth grade. And I think we're at a, at a moment in time where we need to increase enrollment. We have this unique opportunity, we're gonna have a wonderful new facility, that we can make the focus of everybody. Or we can take it some time and say, "You know what? Let's move the high school over, cause they need a home. And let's take that K-8 building and make it a 6'8" building, or a 5'8" building, or, or, or something." And really say, "We're gonna focus in on the middle school kids, and let them come in." And I know there's been talk about plans of, of renting space and, and things, and, uh, this doesn't prevent that. You know, there'll be plenty of empty rooms now at Annie Yates that can be used by the rec department and create that city-school model that we want. You know, we can use, you know, I, I think about myself as a, both former middle school teacher, and as a, as a future parent of a middle schooler, nothing would be better for me than not having to have my middle schooler, but have him go from, you know, 8:00 AM through school, and have a rec program right there on campus. Um, you know, and I think we can do that. We can give space to the rec center in that building, so that they can go right from class to, you know, homework help, to whatever. Again, another parent, quite eloquently in their email me, to me today, said that, you know, that, that wraparound services that, that they're getting through Yates, not realizing that rec is part of the city. You know, I think we're, we're an opportunity here, where we can really make a, a, a really shiny example of sixth grade. I was, I was saddened to hear we lost a Henry child. Um, I've just gotten to know them over the last six months, and really not even myself directly, but through my wife. Um, and, and the fact that we don't have one of those young ladies in our school saddens me, because I think we do better with them in our programs. But I understand this, you know? Um, I, I talked to, uh, Mr. Carver, who's been here, and he's facing that same issue. And I think if we can say, "You know what? We've been thoughtful, we've got a middle school program, we can share teachers with the high school for the subject matter." Uh, I'm talking more than I intended, so let me wrap this all up. Um, I just think it's time we slow down, you know? And then I also know, we got, uh, what do we call it? There's a, there's a nice term, "Value engineering." I, I, that word always bothers me when we hear "value engineering," um, cause I don't really understand what that means. I've translated it, it means we're, we're sort of cutting back here and there. And I look, and we can cut out the, the, the playground equipment. It's $120,000 to put playground equipment in that we haven't done yet, it's not quite on the project side. And to me, that's instant savings that we can use to help this, to make sure we have the quality equipment that we need in the other facilities. And so I just, I, I, I thought this was a moment, but I, I, like I said, I've talked more than I have, and I have a whole lot more on this, but go ahead.
Okay, have you, uh, costed out the, the cost of maintaining Annie Yates, uh, operations in some measure?
You know, I, that's been said to me before, and, and I, or, or has been said in the last week. I even sort of talked to Miguel about this, and, and I'm always perplexed, is the idea that we're just gonna abandon the site. We're gonna have maintenance costs, you know? It's a, it's a, it's a building in our, in our care, um, it's gonna have maintenance costs. And so I'd rather pay those maintenance costs for our students than for other things. And, you know, the maintenance costs will, I think, be outweighed by the fact that we'll have more classrooms. I mean, I've, I, reading through the history, there was a point where we had to turn away kinder students. You know, and I just imagine what an amazing, amazing young student we would have if we had six years from kinder through fifth grade, and they went on to middle school. You know, I, I, cause I think there's a little pushback in districts sometimes when we talk about kids coming from out of district. And I think part of that is because we don't get them at kinder, we get them when they've struggled in, in our neighboring districts, and those districts haven't worked for us, for them, and so we get them. So, yeah, I, you know what? I do think there's gonna be some costs, but I think, hey, you know, $60,000 a year on Townsend, we could use that for the maintenance costs there. Um, you know, I think there is ways we can make it work. Um, you know, I, I, I don't think we wanna go back to the ATM that is the city, but if we're housing some rec space there, um, you know, uh, I think one of the plans was to have the county come and use space at Annie Yates for trainings. And if we're not using the three-story K-8 building to its full capacity, we could dedicate the third floor of that. So it really is not, in my opinion, an overbearing cost. But no, I haven't costed out, because again, I think that would take district effort, and I'm not supposed to charge staff with tasks. So, um, you know, and I, and, and, you know. My other real big fear, and I haven't sort of mentioned this, but since you've got me talking again, um, when I thought about it being an empty site, I know exactly what happens to empty schools in the Bay Area. And I have been approached already by a former board member, saying, "Hey, I have this great charter school that'll give you this if you let them, you know, have that space." And that scares me. I don't want a charter school at an Emory site. We should not allow that. And the moment that school is empty, the vultures will come in and ask us for that space. And it, it, it troubles me that they've already gone to a former board member who is, uh, a proponent of closing that site. And, uh, I really don't wanna see that happen. And so, you know, that's, again, another impetus for this now as well. So, I, you know, we have to maintain the site. It's, it, there's, it's, that, it comes down to that. And, you know, we've hired all these new administrators, we have two administrators at Annie Yates now. We're not gonna save any costs when we become one site, cause our middle school students deserve a dedicated administrator. Our elementary students deserve a dedicated administrator. You know, um, with the LCAP requirements and the paperwork, if we don't wanna kill Dr. Rubio with the amount of work we have him doing. We're trying, we're trying. Well, we got your help, right? We got your help tonight. And so, you know, if we can, if we have capacity to add administrators, I just don't see that the costs are there. I, you know, I just don't see the savings that were promised 10 years ago. And more importantly, if we're gonna be a truly innovative district, then we can't stick with a plan that was 10 years old. That's not the definition of innovative.
So, the, um, uh, the costs are, are significant. Um, and I, I haven't costed them out, but it's, you, you're not just talking maintenance, you are talking administrators. You are talking, um, uh, health and wellness, and nurses and people, uh, moving back and forth between units, and not able to efficiently deliver. Two librarians, um, I mean, the purpose of, uh, the vision of the, of ECCL on one site was to bring the, the whole community onto the site and maximize, uh, the resources and wraparound services, uh, for students. And a, and a full-service community school that wraps around services for students who are facing poverty, and, uh, health and wellness, uh, concerns, trauma, um, i- is one of the most progressive things going on in this country. And, um, that's the vision of the district. Now, I don't, I don't think that's old and out of date at all. I think that's a, a very important vision to continue and to realize. Um, and, and separating back out and opening, uh, a separate facility, or maintaining, uh, and splitting apart our staff, again, and adding additional staff, would, would add hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, to the cost of the district. And you've seen the multi-year projections that we don't have. The, the, the other costs which, um, strike me, and this is more Mr. Merriam's jurisdiction and understanding of mine, but, uh, I think there would be significant redesign costs involved in, um, how to use that facility, and what it was gonna be used for, and, and at this late date, that, that would be, um, quite significant as well. I mean, and these, um, conversations, uh, you know, I supported putting this item on the board, um, so that we could have agenda, so we could have, uh, another conversation about this. Um, and, and have, have the community come and, and, and weigh in. But, uh, I, I don't think we're in a position, you know, midstream here, to all of a sudden stop and try to swim back to the other side, or sw- swim up or downstream. Uh, we, we have invested, uh, 10 years of conversations, going back to the Youth Services Master Plan, uh, that have been talking about the benefits of co-location and a full-service community school. Uh, and, uh, and, and we're, we're, the bell has been rung. So I, I appreciate having this conversation, but I don't think, uh, that, that there's even a, a meaningful exercise in considering on the merits, the, the resolution. Cause I don't think we can change where we are at this point in time. The, the, um...
So we need to take the C out of the ECCL, you know? We cannot be the...
Excuse me.
Community center, I mean, that's ridiculous.
I didn't interrupt you. I didn't interrupt you.
Yeah.
In any event, that, that, I'm just giving you one board member's feedback, uh, on this, uh, item that you've raised. I think it would impose significant costs, uh, and I don't think it, uh, is in the best district in, interest of, of our students at this time. That said, and I have always said, if, uh, if it doesn't work out, uh, if we change direction and it doesn't, and, and if we stay on this path and it doesn't work out, that we should definitely, uh, be able to use Annie Yates, uh, to go, either go back, or if it goes in the other direction and it does work out, and we are getting pressures for more enrollment, uh, then we will have Annie Yates available, uh, to address, uh, that over enrollment. But I, I, it, it's, it's, it's difficult for, for me to see at this time how we could do that. And I, I had a conversation with some of the teachers this morning, um, not about ECCL, but about, uh, feeling pushed and pulled, and, and, uh, going in different directions, uh, over time that this district, they feel is, uh, you know, different superintendents, different board members, different principals coming in. Uh, and the message was, "We need to pick a track, uh, and stay with it, and see if it works." And that, that, that was the request. And I think that's, uh, that's what we're, um, that's what we're talking about here. Other board member comments?
I can add something to kind of the, I wanna say, putting numbers to an idea, um, Member Patz's idea. On paper, it may be relatively easy to change, um, this is speaking through experience of my, uh, I've got 25 years of experience in school design and construction. And as an architect, seeing a change of this magnitude, uh, would really delay the opening of the ECCL by probably a year. And with those changes and that delay, uh, comes cost. And when you speak of changing walls, or changing infrastructure within a site, uh, you're gonna impact, uh, the district more than you would normally think. I'm not negating the idea of changing at this time, but here again, is there's a reality involved with it. When doing so, um, you will impact, uh, the users, uh, and then you'll impact the general public, anybody who steps foot on that site. And I don't think the district wants to really take that on as a burden. And the fact is that this, like, uh, uh, Member Affeld had mentioned regarding, this has been in the planning for over 10 years. And I know that might be a sense of cold feet, but in addition to the change, if anything, that happens on site, there's money involved with that, as far as you think there's gonna be a cost savings, as far as, as far as the play structure. That comes out of one pot of money, and that's a capital improvement funds, where that can't be applied to staff, it can't be applied to just basically the running of the, of the district. So that's kind of a misnomer, when they think there's money available, that there, that is dedicated to one use, and that's the construction of the new ECCL. So, I, I, I mean, it's, it's reality when we, when we start putting changes down and actually acting on them.
Change direction a little bit. Um, I, I cannot speak to how, how changing, making this kind of change would, uh, change the budget, or how, you know, I, I don't, I don't have that experience. My experience is with people, and loving people, and building community. And I think that, uh, full-service community school that was in the plans, that was decided on, um, one of the main reasons that I even got involved, it, I think the opportunity there to teach our youth to build a community amongst themselves in a school, it, it outweighs some of these other concerns. And I'm not, I'm not in any way saying that the concerns of safety, or, or any of the other big concerns that have been brought up are not important. Um, I feel that they've been heard, I feel that they've been addressed in the design aspects. But I think what we are, uh, that many people forget to think about is the opportunity to teach the youth, and any of, anybody who sits in the room who has worked with a high school student knows that it's all about the selfie. They're very, um, self-involved, and not in a, in a bad way, but that's just what their world is. That's, that's what a high school student's world is. It's all about, you know, getting to school, and getting their, their education done, and their homework done, and what have you. And I think that we have an opportunity to teach the youth that are, that are very soon to be the adults of our community to take care of the ones that are coming up behind them. And I think that this school provides that opportunity, um, in a way that, that no other school, that I went to at least, provided that opportunity. And we have many students in this district, um, that don't have that level of support in their home. Um, they don't have, they don't have two parents, sometimes they don't have one parent, they don't, sometimes they don't have a home. You know, we're talking kids that are struggling with many, many issues. And I think a full-service community school, giving them one space that they own for their entire scholastic career before college, it gives them so much, um, security and consistency that many of our students struggle with, that they don't, that they're not getting. And so when I think about this project, and when I think about the co-location, that, those benefits are what are screaming at me. You know, I'm soon to bring a child into this world, and I'm very lucky to have a huge community of people around me to support me through that. But I am, I am not the norm when it comes to people in, in an urban district or an urban area. And I think that we as a community and as a society should take every step possible to continue, to put things in place to, to build that support system for people who don't have them. So, that's how I see this project.
If I could add some numbers for the audience, uh, we did, um, looking at Member Patz's, uh, proposal, we ran some numbers. Um, and these are some things that I hadn't given thought to recently, and I, I sent an email to Member Patz this morning telling him not, letting him know. I was starting to get concerned about the cost factor. We would need a, a part-time, at least, food service person, a secretary, some yard duty, a custodian, an administrator. Uh, our fiscal analysis analyst, Doris Sue's best estimate is that we're talking about $450,000. So, um, I just wanna lend that to the conversation, that people really, I would like everyone in the board to consider the specific amount of money that we're, we're talking about. And the, the timing factor, of course, is a problem, now that the foundation for the K-8 building has been poured.
Member Dice?
So, um, I don't wanna hold up public comment, and I see there's a long line. And, um, but I do wanna say that I think from the, as a, mm, not only as a board member, I'm also a student, um, a graduate of this district, and, um, and also was a recipient of scholarships, um, from, uh, actually, the district used to give the scholarship to the student, used to get the $1,000. So that's... So that's how that all happened. And when I left, that's where the Ed Fund, I believe, I guess, however that came about. But anyway, one thing that was true for many of the alum, including myself, is that we were always an urban school district, is what it is. We're next to Oakland, next to Berkeley. Emeryville never had a large number of students coming directly from, because the housing stock is what it is. I mean, that's just what it has always been. But as the initial start of this particular project, we were dealing with the number of enrollment. And today, you know what, we're still dealing with enrollment. So that's one factor that has remained a constant. But I think, to Joy's point, and I wasn't even going to go there, Joy, but the reality is, is that we have tons of students. I was not a child who had two parents. I was a child of a single parent who did all they could. My sister graduated from Emory, so that's where I was going. And the reality is, we do have students who have things that are in their way for them to even participate in class. And so, this project was that. I mean, that was absolutely what Tony Smith brought forward to the board at the time, and to the community at the time. The problem is, this project has gone longer. It took forever to get even concrete poured, I mean, honestly. And frankly, I know the communication has not been the most consistent when you talk about turnover. We've had turnover in both city, as well as in school. It's not been a few, it hasn't been a few superintendents, it's been a number of superintendents. And so, the fact that we're still talking about the possibility of keeping, you know, certain aspects open is definitely concerning, because I think, I think in reality, if we do, if the numbers were different, if we had, like, busted class, you know, busted enrollment, if we had 1,500 students, that'd be a totally different, we'd have to do something different. But when we're talking about the numbers that we have, we have to really be realistic and pay attention to the numbers as well. Because we're talking about bankruptcy potentially. I'm just being real. I mean, that's what I saw, in terms of a third interim. If we can't meet our solvency question, 1617, that's what we're talking about. So where we have money, ironically, to build a facility, we don't have the financial operational dollars, because we don't have the students. And so, co-location and keeping one open, or keeping one open, that's, what did you say, $450,000 or something? Whatever the number is, it's still more than we have, we have the access to. So, I mean, that's just where I'm sitting with it. But, I mean, that's just how I feel about it.
I'm going to follow up on some of those, if I can.
Of course.
So, you know, I think, so to answer Mr. Miriam's question, I have no intention of changing the building. There's no reason to. You know, a building is a building, and if we're going to build classrooms, build them. I think at this point, we are too far down the rabbit hole to change that. So I don't see any need to change the design, with the possible exception of why spend $120,000 for playground equipment. You know, and if you're telling me that's going to delay it a year, build the equipment. You know, and I also sort of, I appreciate that you ran the numbers, but I find that to be not necessarily accurate, is that we are going to have to serve these kids, irrespective of where they are. And so, when we talk about staffing for lunch and things, you know, I don't think we're going to realize the savings on staffing at the new site, that people think we are going to. I've looked at the design, and there's no way you can have kids at playgrounds out there and see them from one spot. You know, the play structure is on one side, there's a narrow hallway, there's a curve, and that's where the basketball courts are. You're going to need more staff there, whereas I can stand in the Anna Yates and see into the play structure all the way through the field. So, that's another thing. And then, I, you know, I understand this, but if I look back over the last 10 years, and the number of people who have come and gone, and the amount of things that have gone, I wouldn't put stock in Tony Smith's design and plan. You know, he cut and run in Oakland recently. You know, he's now doing things the Chicago way, and I think when you say, huh?
Illinois superintendent now.
Is he? Yeah. It's, you know, I think there are some questions from choices that were made, and discussions that were not had. You know, I've looked through the record pretty extensively at this point, and the last time a large group came and spoke, that board chose not to adopt those amendments. And I find that sort of interesting, that they didn't even do that. So, when we talk about the public trust being broken, my two resolutions this evening are just about that. These are mistakes that we've made in the past, that we can't keep reliving. The choice to co-locate would be wonderful if the schools were, well, on opposite sides of Oakland. We live in Emeryville, I roll out of bed, and I'm in the other side of town. And Anna Yates is not far from, you know, the soon-to-be reopened high school. And the idea that people can't access services at both places, I have never understood. And that, you know, if you have to walk three extra blocks, again, I don't get it. But my biggest concern is, before I hand it over to public comment, is that we won't have kids. I mean, the minute we said we weren't open to this idea, parents stormed out of here. And that's the most telling thing, is the parents keep coming up and saying, "Don't do this, don't do this, don't do this." Teachers have said, "Don't do this, don't do this." And I'm not willing to sit up here and sort of say, "Well, we've already decided this," because, you know, if that were the case, Lindo would still be superintendent. You know, we have sometimes to eat our mistakes, you know? And this is one of those instances where we have a chance to fix it, let's fix it.
My name is Ingrid Eliason. I started teaching in Emory Unified School District in 1994. I was here when Tony Smith started this idea, and there was not community input. I was at all those meetings. There was no groundswell of parents begging to have their elementary school students housed at one campus. I was teaching at the middle school at that time. I thought it was a great idea. Then I moved to Anna Yates, and I found out from the parents and teachers there, that they did not like the idea at all. They thought it was a terrible idea. They tried to share their beliefs with the administration. They were ignored. They tried to share their beliefs with the school board. They were ignored. And now, they're getting ignored again. I am outraged. I am completely outraged. I just, I've dedicated my life to this school district, to this community, to these students. And I am very disappointed that the best interests of our students are not being kept in mind. I'm here also to speak for Emory Teachers Association President Dawn Turner, who was unable to stay for the full length of this meeting. On Tuesday, April 21st, Emory Teachers Association met, and we voted to support this resolution. We believe it is in the best interest of our students and their families that elementary students remain at the Anna Yates campus, and that the new campus focus on providing an excellent program that will retain and attract new middle school and high school students. Right now, our district is in peril because of the fact we cannot keep our students. I have seen this the entire time in my 20-plus years working in this district. They come in in kindergarten, and then they start leaving at sixth grade, they leave at eighth grade. We do a wonderful job with our students, but we can't keep them. Something needs to change, so that will not be true anymore. Thank you.
My name is Ames Simpson, and I have a daughter in first grade. And it's coming up on 12 years that I've been an Emeryville resident. And when we were sold the bill of goods for Measure J, we were told point-blank that co-location was not necessarily an option, and that Anna Yates would not go away. And that a lot of sport that came behind Measure J, people were reassured that that wasn't going to be an option, or if it was, there'd be a ton of input. What strikes me is that we're actually having this conversation when you say, you know, the train has already left the station. Like, I cannot tell you the number of times that the people, my neighbors, fellow parents, have had this conversation amongst ourselves, the amount of times we've tried to reach out and have these conversations, the kinds of community engagement things that were happening, where, you know, there has been a loud voice, and I cannot understand for the life of me why it continues to fall on deaf ears. The loud voice that says, you know, "Do not get rid of Anna Yates," for a variety of reasons. I could probably spend another 10 minutes telling you why I think it would do a disservice not only to the students, but to the actual neighborhood. But like, so, it's just confusing to me that we're having this conversation now. The second thing I want to say is, the argument that, you know, we're too far along to change course, is like, if you're driving, and suddenly you see a cliff, does it make sense to keep going? No. Like, that's the kind of, that's how I feel about this right now, that that's not a good argument. Like, if it's a matter of, I just think it takes people off the hook, it takes people, you know, it allows people not to be accountable for the decisions they've made by saying, "Oh, it's too late, we've already, you know, we've already gone there, and we didn't listen, and, you know, we've spent 10 years." 10 years of this planning did not include, you know, if you guys had a plan for 10 years, you did a good job of trying to convince us that it didn't include getting rid of Anna Yates, and that it didn't include co-location. That that has now become part of what, you know, Measure J and ECCL means, you know. Anyway, you know, I had a few other points about growing enrollment. Like, you know, the first thing you want to say is, you know, if you keep Anna Yates open, it's going to lead to, you know, all these costs. What is it going to cost you, every student that you lose from the student body? So, anyway, I just wanted to say that, like, as a parent of, you know, I, with new leadership in this school, and some of the changes that I've seen over the past year, I'm actually beginning to have hope about this school district. Mostly, I feel like I'm a parent that's, that, you know, I'm trapped, because this is where I live, and this is the deal. But I have an excellent teacher for my child, I feel like there's some good leadership in place, I have, you know, there's a solid community, it's a neighborhood school. You know, if, if
Out of time.
... becomes a co-location, I mean, if you get rid of Anna Yates, I will have, get an inter-district transfer, and I will leave this district. I'm not the only one that feels that way. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, next comment?
Hello again. J.J. Tong. Again, I'm an Emeryville resident, I have a child here at Anna Yates, I have a second one that will be in kindergarten next year. And I am, first of all, very disappointed to hear you say, President Affleck, that this is a done deal. That weren't, those weren't your exact words, but that was certainly the message that you wanted us all to hear. And, you know, I agree with Ames, that, you know, if there is the cliff, that we would probably stop and turn around and try to find a better way. The fact is, is that I am not a proponent of having my five-year-old on the same campus with an 18-year-old that is experiencing much different things in their life as my five-year-old. Now, I am, I love this community. We have embraced the preschool community, we are trying to embrace Anna Yates. And what I mean by that is that, as Ames also pointed out, you know, we are also seeing hope with all of the new leadership that has come in. And we don't want to become the statistic of us leaving, certainly not at the sixth grade level, but even sooner than that, if this is going to go through the way it is. I did not hear Mr. Pat say that he wanted to change anything about the actual building itself. I would hope that you guys would take this opportunity as a future forward-thinking view, and say, "Well, you know, instead of having everybody co-locate on one campus, that if we have the opportunity of keeping Anna Yates, and growing it as an excellent elementary school, and have the opportunity to grow the programs, and that of six through 12, at the other campus, that you actually have the room to do that." It's all shiny and new, and it's all great, but it's a little perplexing to me to wonder why we are putting all of our money into building a brand-new shiny building, instead of building brand-new shiny programs for our students, that are actually going to prepare them better for the next part of their school life, the next, you know, whatever step that is, you know, the next school, the next college, work, whatever that is. And so, I would like to think that this is an opportunity for you to think how you can actually grow. Yes, I understand, and I heard the enrollment piece, and that that's of concern, and that's not happening. But I will tell you right now, that my children, as it stands right now, will not continue in this district the way it is currently. And unless something drastically changes, we are going to be one of those statistics, and we will move outside of Emeryville.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm not sure I can be nearly as eloquent. I wish there had been a robocall, it would have been nice. I was in front of the school, talking to parents this morning, yesterday morning, or Monday morning. And you'd be surprised, the amount of them that were absolutely shocked that Anna Yates was going to close. They looked very upset, they wondered where their kids would go. When I pointed to San Pablo, I said they'd be going to the new high school campus. They looked at me, and I'm anecdotal, just, they looked at me and said, "I don't want the little kids there with the big kids. You guys have turned a deaf ear on many occasions, to many warnings that come to you from the community. This is community. You are supposed to listen and take in input from the community. Not stay your course, and listen to yourselves, and stay stuck in a way that you have been for 10 years, and not be open to any new ideas." I don't know else to say. I could say a lot more, but I'm going to refrain. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ruth Major. I've been a resident in Emeryville since 1984. My background is education. I have a few points, and I want you to help me understand this. 10 years ago, we needed 1,200 children in our schools to make them viable. Echol, I heard tonight, 850, I've been hearing before 800. That was 10 years ago, we needed 1,200, so there's a little anomaly there for me. I'm thinking of, if we keep Anna Yates open, and we do get the 850 children at Echol, then you're looking at your local control funding formula, which didn't get added into the arithmetic just now. You're talking about children K-23, $7,675 per child. You're talking about middle school over $7,000. You get up to high school, it's $8,638 per child. You reduce the class sizes, in the early grades, it's 2.6 percent you'll get for that. You get, oh, sorry, I think it's, no, it's more than that, it's 10.4 incentive around class size changing. You'll have to go back and look at the formulas, I'm not, you know, I haven't got them in my head. But you're looking at a bigger picture here around money coming in, money going out, plus just building capacity for our schools. So I think that's an important thing to think about. In terms of one of the goals is parent engagement and parent partnership. So I think you need to look at that, particularly as your parents don't feel that they're getting that reciprocity of engagement. So that's really important to think about. I also urge you to look again at the stakeholders engagement part of the local control funding, the LCAT, because I think you're a little off on that from my understanding of it. So I suggest you reread that around parent engagement, and when meetings happen, and things like that. So those are some of the things I wanted to talk about, because I know the families here want to talk about the actual relationship building, the actual connection to community, how do we build a community of learners? What does it mean to have a school? What is the relationship with the school? What does the school mean to a community?
Out of time.
Those are considerations. And the last thing I want to say, thank you, Lisa, the last thing I want to say is, one of the things that might be helpful, Head Start is here, early Head Start is here in this building, is to arrange through partnerships this building, is to arrange through partnership with them, some childcare for the families so that they could have more engagement with you at these meetings. So, I think that would also be useful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, President Affeld. My name is Brian Carver. I think procedurally, it was really unfortunate that the board members all chose to spoke, speak before public comment because it suggested to folks that you were unwilling to be moved, even by reasons, right? You know, that your minds were already made up on this and I hope that's not the case. As others have said, it's never too late, right, to stop yourself from making a bad decision. And I think that's what we're going to do if we proceed in this way. I don't agree with every word in this resolution, but I do believe you should support its basic idea that the best thing for our children in our district is for the youngest children to stay at Anna Yates when the ECCL opens. I'm going to give you, try to give you quickly five reasons for this. First, financial. We talked tonight about two ways to fix a budget, cut costs or increase for everyone. The problem here is you cannot make enough cuts to make a single site with 800 K to 12 students financially sustainable. In part, this is because a successful district needs more than 800 students to offer the full range of programs that attract students and parents to stay in a district. The same 30 middle schoolers can't be expected to be in band on JV basketball, yearbook, drama club, newspaper, everything, right? It takes larger critical mass of students in order to have all those options that people want. So, we need to grow beyond 800 students and the ECCL site simply can't do that. Additionally, not having to build the play structure or to immediately buy some of the furniture that the Anna Yates students would need would save you some money right away and maybe prevent you from making some of the difficult value engineering decisions you've been grappling with. Don't change anything about the buildings. Christian's right about that. Just build them as is, but see what other uses they could be put to. The second reason is competition. And he said this too. I was horrified when he said he has already been reached out to by another charter school interested in the Anna Yates site. If that happens, if that school even attracted a few dozen students that otherwise would have gone to Emory, then this enrollment problem I just described gets even worse. You just cannot open the district up to someone using our own public property in competition with us. It will spell the end of this district. The third reason is focus. Anna Yates is the district's shining star. It works. The middle school and the high school, on the other hand, have suffered dramatic enrollment declines in just the last couple of years. Every time I hear the numbers, they've gone down. We need to show parents of middle and high schoolers that this district is committed to providing those students with the programming they need and deserve. If the elementary students stayed at Anna Yates, it would allow the district to focus on the middle school. Some of those eight K through eight building rooms could be dedicated spaces for the middle school clubs and activities and could let the after-school rec program use some of that space so that they stay out of the teacher's hair. The fourth reason is the teachers. You just heard that a majority of our teachers want to see the youngest children stay at Anna Yates. No one is closer to their needs and understands what is best for the education of our children than their teachers. We should listen to them. I heard Ms. Turner say that it was an overwhelming majority of teachers who felt this way. The fifth reason for this is timing. You don't have to make this decision for all time tonight. You can simply decide that we're going to keep the youngest Anna Yates students in place for maybe two years and reevaluate at that time whether they should move over to ECCL. Doing the move-in in phases would be less disruptive, I think, anyway, if you decided that you had to do that.
You're out of time.
Those are my five reasons. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi again. I've been going to, sorry, I've been going to Anna Yates for about three and a half years now. I'm glad the school structure has come along in great success. There are wonderful teachers that made an impact on me. As a result, this school has helped me earn a lot of resources and knowledge on education. Throughout the short years I've been, I've seen musical classes, drama classes, and now science classes for girls. When the school, when the school goes to a different location, will all the staff go to the location? I'm just wondering that. And, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Megan McLaughlin, grade one. I think I'm in year nine at Anna Yates. I was part of the, I forget what you call it, the planning committee, drawing on teachers and community members from Emeryville. And I was a believer and I thought it was really exciting. And then I started to have my doubts about the following items. Shared areas, playground, and the size of the classes. All of those areas that I just mentioned
Sorry, what was the last one? I didn't hear.
The shared areas, the playground, and the size of the classrooms. Just that, you know, we have large class, larger classes than 20 now. I also would like to advocate as a positive out of all of this, that we can make a really great middle school and high school with that space that will really attract. And our music program, Mr. Salvatore is doing such a great job with the band. Our athletic facilities there will be great. We can really compare with Berkeley if we put energy into that site. And likewise, I believe at Anna Yates, we can attract Head Start and have a pre, a transitional K classroom, maybe two transitional Ks, because we have a lot of youngsters that their parents are really thinking, oh, great, my kid's going to kindergarten. Well, no, the age went up and you're in that in-between area if your child's born in October, September, October, November, or December, or your child's just not ready for kindergarten and we have a transitional K available. So, I'm saying that's five classrooms that could be full with two transitional Ks and a couple of Head Starts. We also would have room for the rec center to do a really awesome job at Anna Yates. And it would just be really nice to have the breathing room of K5. I would recommend grade six go, not because we don't love them, we love them, but because I think that they belong at the new site with the, all the facilities there. Thank you very much for the consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm again Susan Donaldson, a parent of a first grader. And I just wanted to quickly make the observation that it's really incredible that, out of all this anxiety here tonight, that you can feel how excited people feel about the possibility to make an amazing junior high. And that's really, that's pretty awesome because we don't, and I feel like we don't feel that a lot until you can literally, like, everybody, that's amazing that people feel that hope and excitement around that. So, that's nice and something noteworthy. And then along those lines, I recently completed my master's in business and one of the things we talked about incessantly was the ability to pivot and how the most successful businesses and the most successful ideas come from people that are willing to pivot, that are willing to respond to feedback and listen to, listen to change when it's needed. And that, you would, no one would ever say, we're too far along, let's just keep going, even though maybe this, maybe it's not a great idea. But those that can pivot, that's, those are the ones that succeed. And we're given this opportunity to pivot here tonight is, and I think that's exciting. I also feel like it is worth seeing the numbers on this enrollment versus, income from enrollment versus the expenses of considering another site. It sounded like maybe that was not being considered as something worthwhile, but it seems like there's still, there's some confusion about that. So, I do think that's worth seeing those numbers on paper. And also, my final thought here is that I do believe strongly in creating a community and teaching our students to care for one another. And I think everyone's behind that about, and excited about that, about having a place, a school in Emeryville that stands for that. However, I also believe that we can teach our children that no matter where they are and that two campuses is not going to change our ability to do that. It might even make it better, easier.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Hello, Tracy Lewis, second, third grade. A couple of concerns. Been in the district for 10 years, going on 11 years now. And since this conversation started, it was a great idea when we were looking at possibly acquiring the AC Transit location. Relocating then was a great idea because you had two completely different buildings right across the street from each other. But the moment that that opportunity disappeared, it made no sense to squish all of our students and staff into a city block. There simply is not enough space. Even with the best designs, middle school students, their bodies are larger, they don't fit into the same-sized classrooms, they need more space to run and play, as well as not bumping into the little ones who are in the middle of recess. We have that problem now at Anna Yates. And now it's, we're K8. There's not enough space. We are having growing pains. When Anna Yates was at this site, we were turning students away. We had numbers. The numbers were growing. We were turning students away at various grade levels, not just at K. So, we have the potential to grow, but my question is, does the board have the potential to listen? Because we have been saying the same thing now for 10 years. Please do not squish us into this small space, number one. It's not the buildings that do it. It's the people who work in the buildings. It's the people who run the programs that make the house the home, that make the building a school, a community, a classroom. We have a community. We're here. We're trying to have a conversation about what's best for kids. And it pains the kids when we want them to be able to do things, but they can't because they're falling and stumbling all over each other. And it's not fair to our middle school students for us to see them leave. The charter schools and the schools around us, they can't wait for our students to get to sixth grade. They want our kids. They're very, they're already ready to go. They're like the cream of the crop. And it pains me as a person who works in the school, and I taught those babies. My child went to this, was in this district. There's no way in the world he was going to continue here and go to a K-12 school with the design. I sat in the meetings with the design about the playground, the play yard, and the board spent a lot of money on these people to come in and show us all these different designs and not provide the things that the students asked for. Again, not listening. Thousands and thousands of dollars spent on talking and not getting the programs into the kids' hands. Still waiting on Level Libraries, still waiting on AR, still waiting on certain things to happen curriculum-wise, collaboration-wise, the time, the structure. We are here, ready to do the work. We're doing the work.
You're out of time.
Please listen. We can do the work, but don't squish us. We're not sardines. We produce people, not widgets. Thank you.
So, my name is Anthony Rogers. This issue is kind of sensitive to me because I'm one of the middle school teachers. And I heard the term, first of all, good evening, family, right, at the table and at the seats and standing and those above and below. I heard the term like 10 years, this, we've been working on this for 10 years. How many people remember when the razor phone came out? It was such an amazing piece of technology. You know, I know people who went bankrupt to get that phone. But if I use that phone today, if I pulled it out anywhere in public, I would be a laughing spectacle because I'm holding on to a work 10 years ago. And as we know, I have some little notes here, technology, civilization, relationships, and conversations progress. And so, I want to make sure that when we're talking about these things, we, I can imagine what it was like to be a student in the audience and this, these are the adults that teach me and then govern me. And if we're not being really decent and listening to each other, if we're being dismissive and we're talking about the students and what they don't have and what they do have, and yet the children are not telling us, I really think we need to throw caution to the wind with that. I think it's important that we think about the way teachers have been used as chess pieces. When Anna Yates was a K through six school, that sixth grade was always fully attended and sometimes it was overflowing. And then you had some teachers moved around, I'm not going to say the teacher was me, but one of the teachers was me. And so, when you had teachers moved around, students left. There are teachers that have reputations and their character precedes them and follows them. And I think that's important to consider besides talking about the grades. Look at who's in these positions and look at who's teaching because that's what's happening. Many of our students who go on and in charter schools, they come back and they talk about how far ahead they are of their classmates at these charter schools. So, these charter schools are hovering around, they can't wait to pull our students out of our classrooms. And as a middle school, as a, not middle school, well, we are cool in the middle, but as a middle school teacher, it bothers me to know that there are people who cannot, who know my name and know what I do and can't wait to pull my students from me. And so, I think that's important to consider. We're not chess pieces. Maybe we are, but I'm not. All right. And the other thing is, community means to come together as one. If we're divisive and we're at, and we're at ends in this small space, I can imagine us moving anywhere else and we're talking about family and all these guiding principles and yet I don't feel that sense of family here. And so, I always, in my life, I believe I say no to dysfunction and yes to functionality. And I just want to throw that out there that we should always, well, I'm going to say aye, have to model the things that I want my students to see, but I want to make sure as we talk, even if we don't agree about it, let's show honor and respect to each other. And it's great, I could pull out all kinds of terms and things that I learned about life and architecture, but that's not important. Even if I disagree, I want to listen to what you have to say. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question real quick? Thanks. My son's five. Will you stick around so you can be his middle school teacher?
Honestly, I was talking outside by the, I don't know. But by the way that the things are going, I was just sitting there saying, I don't know. I can't answer that, honestly, I can't answer that. Because being moved around as a teacher, it doesn't feel good. It doesn't feel good when you do a particular, you give a service to a community and then your reward is, it's not like, it's, you're not acknowledged and appreciated. And I'm not throwing anyone on blast, but I do know, I tell my students every day, when I, when I get out of bed, I used to pray every day before I went to Anna Yates, send me where you need me to be needed. Because that's, I'm from the south. And so, I would say, send me where you need me to be needed. An accident never happened. I was never turned anywhere else. Always came to Anna Yates without a problem. And so, when I go there, I'm serving the students out of a passion because that passion has provided my purpose. I'm not there for the pay, but I am because it helps me to pay my bills. However, I'm there because this is what I love to do. But if I'm not being honored, if I'm not being respected, if I'm not being listened to, my feet are large enough to keep moving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Anthony Rogers.
Hello, my name is Juniper Bauch. I have a daughter at Anna Yates and one at ECDC, which is where I met most of these people here. I wanted to come up here and say actually that I am an inter-district transfer. I think I might be the only one here tonight, but one of the reasons that I did come to Emeryville was because of the great people that I met at ECDC and because of the education that my daughter received there right off the bat in preschool, which really impressed me. And so, being in the neighborhood and driving by Anna Yates and just getting pretty much a really good feeling from the school, I decided that I would try to come over and transfer into this district. And I'm really happy that I did because it's been a real pleasant surprise. You hear a lot of bad things about public school and as a new mom, like, you know, as a new parent of a school child, you're absolutely overwhelmed with your, you know, fears of what you need to do for your child and where you should send them and what is the best place, direction for them to go. And Anna Yates has been like an absolutely amazing experience for me. I've been really impressed and I just, I'm new to this whole thing. I wasn't around 10 years ago, so I'm coming at this from kind of a new perspective. But when I heard that the little kids were going to move over to this new school, which I think looks really nice, and I think that it's, it looks like it's going to be a really nice school. But it's just the fact that, yeah, if you think about the emotional development of little children and being thrown together in this big mumble jumble, it does kind of make you step back a little bit because you're embarking on a new journey and it sounds like a good idea on paper and it looks good, but when you think about the reality of like the emotional development of children and what you could be offering them at what stage, it seems definitely a little bit like it's a crowded environment, especially considering that it seems to be the whole community center, not just school. I'm not sure if I'm correct on that. So, the library is going to be open to the entire public and the health center is going to be open to the entire public, which just seems like it's a little bit strange to me. However, I do think that there is a lot of possibility there to, especially if you're talking about enrollment, and since I'm coming from an inter-district kind of transfer thing, I think that if you were to use that space wisely and open it up with a lot more curriculums, then your enrollment problem would definitely go, you know, away. Because if you offer all of that space to different programs that can grow and expand, then everybody will want to come. But I already know a lot of people who want to come to Anna Yates and that find it difficult to do the inter-district transfer. So, I think that that might be an issue you guys, I don't know, can work on or help make it easier for people to actually transfer. know, can work on or help make it easier for people to actually transfer. Which I think if you keep, I think if you keep Anna Yates open, then you would have a better possibility to do that, because you could be providing after-care program with the city of Emeryville Rec Department and come up with new programs so that maybe you can make the inter-district transfer thing easier. And then also just provide, yeah, way more opportunity. And that goes, I also wanted to say that actually really the garden at Anna Yates was one of the main reasons that I wanted to come transfer. And I hope that somehow you can figure the fun thing out, because that's really like an amazing space for the kids, and I think you should keep it.
Thank you.
Hello again, Tim Bukowski. One of the things that always bothered me about this is that the community never had a chance to say, "Don't close Anna Yates." That option was not provided. The staff wouldn't make, wouldn't allow it to happen. And I always felt that the community didn't want to do that. And I would say, "You know what? Even if you think K through 12 is better, that's not what the community wants, and that's not what we should be doing." Now, I think Brian Carver hit it on the head. You're going to need more students to sustain this district in the long run, and it's not going to happen if it's limited to only 800 kids. You have to expand this district to make it bigger so you can offer the kind of curriculum that's going to encourage people to enroll. So I think it would be, at least in the beginning, you shouldn't, you're going to have too much confusion at once, you're trying to do too many things at one time. You got something that works, leave it in place and make the other one work and put a lot of energy into it, and then we can all succeed. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I really think that you should consider transitioning the students, because when people talk about this plan always being 10 years in the making, the reality is they were talking about the AC Transit site in addition to the site. And in addition to that, up until a couple of years ago, they were talking about needing 1,200 students to actually pay the bills and to keep the site running. And you're not going to be able to do that without Anna Yates. What they did was they eventually, they cut down the size of the building, because when it turned out there wasn't as much money available for, from the construction funds when the evaluations in the city dropped. And instead of having like 100 million or 110 million, it dropped to 90 million. They decide, "Well, we're going to cut down on the size of the building to accommodate fewer people." But then that means that you're dropping the enrollment, and the enrollment is where the money's coming to support the school. And I think though what you should do is you should move the kids into the high school, move the middle school into the center of community life, keep Anna Yates open for a period of time, and see if you can grow the enrollment. See if you, see if you can fill the, you know, get additional kids in the middle school, additional kids in the high school. And if things are working out and the enrollment increases, then you'll have the money to pay the, you know, the kitchen staff, you know, everybody that you need, the teachers. And so I think that, and I think the possibility of losing the site to a charter school is really, because then you're really in trouble, because then what do you do? You don't have any place to grow. And so I think that that's something you should really give some consideration to. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
My name is Scott Donahue. I've been recently elected to the Emeryville City Council. And I know for a fact that AC Transit now has two of their corporate bus yards that are small and not so functional from their point of view. And one of those bus yards that they're considering moving is in fact across from our site. Now, that's not to say that they're going to do it soon, but they are, they are looking. There may be a future across from our site with that bus yard becoming available sometime in the future. The other thing I wanted to say is that my niece Fallon has really benefited from Anna Yates. I think the, the school has been very good for her. And I, and I see a lot of things about it that seem to function well, as reported by the next-door neighbors, the retired judge and a former Anna Yates teacher and a school district teacher have moved next door where John Fricki used to live. And they hear these children of all the spread of ages in the morning, and they say it is like the morning birds. They really just have appreciated how successful Anna Yates has been from their point of view. The lack of acrimony between students, it really has been a successful community from their seeing it every day. And, you know, I think that in effect, what is going to happen is there's going to be the high school opening before the Anna Yates students move over. You're going to have a test and see what it's like to have two, two sites happening at the same time. So I think that you'll be able to judge what the public response is to the new school. So I think that these are in effect early times for your, your transition, and you're just going to learn more as time goes on. And there could be surprises, there maybe could be more interest in enrollment. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Diane Martinez, Triangle Neighborhood resident. I also, I've got two children, a four-year-old and a two-year-old, and my four-year-old will either be starting at Anna Yates or at UCL, whichever is the kindergarten class of 2016. A lot of interesting thoughts tonight, and my heart is with the parents and the teachers who came to discuss the concerns that they say they've had for a very, very long time. And I think Betsy Cooley, if she's still here, actually said it, had a very rational, reasonable proposal to transition our kids from Anna Yates to UCL and see if that works. I also wanted to highlight something that council, excuse me, member Pats mentioned, that three blocks is not that far. I went to a K through nine school in Los Angeles, and it was a very magical place. It did work for that community. But we also had access to the USC campus, and it was a time of free-range parenting, so perhaps I should not have had access to USC at nine years old, but it gave me an affinity to the school. I crossed very busy boulevards to get across the street to attend certain programs. But I do, what I mean to say is that the services that will be provided at UCL, I don't think will be prevent, the kids at Anna Yates will be able to partake of these programs, just as they do with the rec right now. It's not brain science, brain surgery, excuse me, to get the kids across the street. So.
Hi, I'm back again, my other child. I made it through the night. Okay, anyhow, I had something to share, and my daughter also. Her name is Jasmine, and she's in kindergarten, and Mrs. Miles' class is her first year. And she has something she wants to say, and I too have something I want to say. I think for a child this age, because a lot of times you can map out everything, you know, but when you add children inside and you take their shoes and you understand how you would feel, if you go back to being a child, how you would feel as a child this small in the same entrance of 12th graders, and what they do, and what they talk about in their mannerisms. Everyone still has to go through the same entrance in the same facility. And so if you look at it through a child perspective, you can have a different enlightenment education. And I feel personally the site of Anna Yates is a great site, is their first year here. And, you know, I really enjoy the K through eight, you know? And then I feel like the other site should be for the older children. And my daughter, she wants to speak. Okay, Jasmine. What everyone is, here, hold it. You were singing the other day. Say your name.
My name is Jasmine.
My name is Jasmine, and I have something to say to you.
Please don't sc- Please don't close my school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've had our last speaker of the evening on this item. Are there any further board member thoughts or comments?
Just a minor one.
Yeah.
Regarding reconfiguration. The first floor of the K through eight billing is entirely devoted to kindergarten. And that classroom size is 1,200 square feet minimum. And if you were to go ahead and redivide that, that is actually changing the footprint of the building and configuration, so there is a delay involved with that. Other things is, is the classrooms designed for K through six, they're probably at a different scale than in a high school or middle school. So there's a lot more than just renaming the rooms. I just wanted to point that out, as far as it's not an easy endeavor to change anything at this state regarding just the plans. Mind you, they're still under construction, but I'm just stating fact and knowledge of what has happened on other projects of this nature where changes do occur at Cistreality.
We're done with public comment. Specially for people who've already commented. Board members get to comment lots of times. Actually, our public comment period by bylaws is 20 minutes per item. So we've gone, you know, about three times that. So I really appreciate everyone coming out and, and the really thoughtful comments that we've had from the community on this topic. I think you raised a number of interesting questions that, you know, I can say I, I don't, I'm not ready to vote on this and say, you know, yes, let's, okay, you convinced me, let's, let's just change this, and this is the resolution to do it with. But I would like to, you know, think about, I'd like to think about this, I'd like to digest it. And also would be curious to see some of the financial figurings to really know if, if we could even afford to entertain a writ large, a middle school, you know, a, say, six-eight at that site and a K-five at Anna Yates. Could that even be entertained? Because I started out saying I don't think it can, where we're at right now with our multi-year projections, like, I don't think we can. But I'm willing to look at this point in time and test that assumption of could, you know, what does it, what does it mean in terms of the cost of staffing that site? What does it mean in terms of cost of separately staffing our site? How would the wellness program work going between? And we've had a lot of, I know it seems like it's three blocks away, but we have had teachers and community members come to this board meeting on more than one occasion, say that is a dangerous crossing to go between, across San Pablo there. So, yeah. Well, there are people who, who, who make that one-on-one to come to school, but to make that a regular part of the program is that you will, it's not going across the street to the rec center, it's going, you know, back and forth to, to the side. I don't know, that's a question. But, so I guess that's, that's where I'm at, is thinking about some of the costing issues to know, and I guess to address Mr. Merriam's question too, like, are there, you know, real, could, it sounds like, you know, you'd really have to redo some reconfiguring or, or could we put a middle school in a kindergarten classroom?
You can, but it's an inefficient use of space.
You're not speaking into the mic.
I'm sorry. You can, but it's, there's, like I mentioned before, there's a scale issue regarding these classrooms were designed for kindergarten, which is usually a smaller scale. And to come in and basically take out casework, doors and windows are pretty much the same, but you start looking at the inside of a building, inside of a room, it is, you would have to redesign that as far as that portion, and then where walls and the dividing of those spaces, rather than 1,200, it's 900 to 960 is a typical classroom build, our classroom size.
Can I make a suggestion on, instead of putting the middle school in the kindergarten classroom, why don't we put them one floor up in the middle school classroom?
What's the use of the first floor then?
You know, if it's 1,200 square feet, it's going to be the same use we have for Anna Yates right now, where we have kinder classes empty. We can find use for it. We can make it a music room, we can make it an art room, we can make it, you know, believe me, I've been on, I've taught in public education for a while, and I have yet to find an empty classroom where they just said, "You know, the square footage is wrong." I mean, I spent two years teaching in a closet. So, you know, I, again, I think it's, it's clear to me that when I move this item and I plan to move it, I won't get a second, and that's okay. That's the same as a no vote from the four of you. But it saddens me that for 10 years, we've been looking at the community and saying, "Yeah, that's an excellent comment. Let's put that in the parking lot, and we'll get back to you on that." And so I know this because I went to these planning meetings, and that's what I was told. And so, you know, we're at that point again, let's put this in the parking lot. And more importantly, we're at the, five of us know better than the entire community. And, you know, it saddens me. But I've talked enough. I think the people spoke much better than I did.
So can I add? In terms of the question about looking at details, I think it would be useful. I would, I'm curious. I mean, I think there's some, there's some hardcore pieces that we have to do anyway in terms of use of location, just in general. We don't have a, we need to craft or finish out our facilities master plan in, anyway. So I mean, I think there are some opportunities to look at things, and I like your train of thought in terms of looking at data. I mean, we have to do that. And that may be the point that was raised in terms of transition. I don't know. I mean, I honestly don't know, but I think we do, I'm not interested in passing a resolution that, you know, ends the, you know, stops things, but I think in terms of a board, we can ask direction of staff, to the staff to actually look at the item, instead of acting on something without enough detail. But I think that's something that we could do this evening, is my thought. But we don't have enough information. We have, you know, not enough pieces here, but I think it would be helpful to know some of these components and timelines or scale or whatever, those things, so that we have an informed, you know, concept in front of us, so.
I think we're going to have a couple of problems. One is, it's going to be very difficult for us to gauge financially, sort of these pretend scenario where we have, we could try it, but it's, I don't know how accurate it will be. The bigger, the bigger concern I have is the legal issue. When voters voted for Measure J, and it says here in the language that, you know, the district will be collaborating with the city of Emeryville to save taxpayers' money by building facilities that maximize cost efficiencies while creating safe schools, da-da-da, instead of operating two schools and community facilities separately, da-da-da-da-da. You know, you know, health services, da-da-da, Emeryville children and families at the same location where schools are housed. We have a real legal problem here. Voters came out, I don't know how many hundreds of people, well, excuse me. If voters came out, I don't know how many hundreds of people, well, excuse me, I'm, so I'm reading directly from the full text.
All right, all right, all right.
So, so I think, I think, I think we're going to have.
Come on, Mr. Carver. We, we don't, we don't need to disrupt.
As I was saying, I believe we have, we have also a legal issue to review.
Okay. Yeah. We're not going to, yeah, we're not, yeah, we understand, yeah, we, yeah. I think that we understand you have a different interpretation and that's fine, but this is not moving us forward in a productive way to dispute about a language of Measure J. Excuse me, excuse me. I think, I think, I think you're not, I think you're not hearing what actually you've heard from the board tonight, which is that there's some real interest in going back and looking at some data to see if the various propositions that people have thrown out might actually work. Because if they don't actually work, we can't do it. But if they do actually work, then we can have a real discussion of could we actually do what you're proposing? And I think that, I think that was serious movement that you heard. If, so that's what I would recommend.
Yeah.
That we take a look at this and, yeah, I don't think we're going to resolve the Measure J issue right now, but I'm, I'm interested in knowing if we could feasibly do this. And if, it may be that we need to get a consultant, it may need, we, we do a range of options of what it would cost at different enrollment levels, different grade splits. I don't, you know, I don't know all the, you know, permutations, but I think it's, that I think is worth looking at. So, Mr. Pats, would you, you'd rather move and not have a resolution passed?
Well, I mean, it's, I don't believe it's ever going to pass. I don't believe we're, I, you know, so I'm going to at least get it on the record. I'm, so, you know, I'll move the item and you guys can either second it for a vote or you can just let it die. So, Mr. President, I move the item.
So before there's a vote, is there still no discussion? I mean, is there still no direction at that point? So if there's a request to, if there's been direction requested of the district to look at options or questions about that, so does this, if we vote and there's a interest to do, you know, interest to do it or whatever, does that kill the request for additional? I have no idea, I'm just curious.
I guess, yeah, no, I mean, the, if there's no second, we could decide to give no direction and move on. My recommendation is whatever happens to Mr. Pats' motion, we take a look at some of the data to see if this could even be done.
Hey, you know what?
If you don't want that to happen, then we don't have to.
So I have another suggestion and I'm going to go out on a limb here because I do that sort of thing. I think this resolution is as binding as anything else we do and therefore we can pass this resolution, which would then give very clear direction to staff who could then come back and say, you know what, Dr. Pats, you are absolutely nuts. We cannot do this. And then we will come up with another resolution, says that, and you can even title it the Dr. Pats' Nuts Resolution, and go from there. So I'm happy to do that, you know? So that's another option.
I don't think it's responsible as a, as a public official to adopt a resolution that I don't know the consequences of.
Yeah.
So that's my opinion. So you've moved.
I've moved.
You know, is there a second?
Yep, that's what I thought.
I don't see a second. Nonetheless, so the motion dies, nonetheless, I would still like some information from staff to determine if some of the recommendations we heard here tonight could in fact be implemented without bankrupting the district and putting us into a negative certification. Mr. Marion, do you have an opinion on that?
I'm interested in finding more information about that because it's still a wild card. I, you can't determine what the ramifications are going to be for this.
Mr. Pats, are you opposed to having further analysis on this?
Oh, sure. Let's parking lot it, it sounds like a good idea.
Okay. All right. Superintendent, is that enough direction for the, for the time being? All right. Again, thank you folks for coming. We're obviously going to take a second look at this, so appreciate your thoughts and comments. The final item of the evening is about our BITSA program. Superintendent, you want to introduce that?
Ms. Sorrell, I think is introducing it, yes.
This item, this item is, this item is to approve the MOU between the District and the Contra Costa County Office of Education to continue operating the BITSA program as we have done for several years past. The reason this item is being brought to the board tonight in particular is given that in, in past years, there has been a reimbursement from BITSA to the district. This coming next year, there will no longer be the reimbursement and going out the third year, the districts will then be charged the money because BITSA is losing its funding to provide the payments to the districts.
You're doing a wonderful job wrestling with the microphone there.
And the request is to please approve the agreement, acknowledge, well, with the information that.
So what we'll have to do is we'll have to keep in mind as we develop the LCAP that, you know, the county, the county, certainly Contra Costa County, probably other counties are, don't have a funding stream as far as I know, or much of a funding stream for BITSA anymore. And so there's not that interest or availability for the counties to continue to give school districts money to support BITSA. And so it will go from, as Ms. Sorrell said, being money given to us to allow for that mentoring to take place to this upcoming year, no money being given to us, to then transitioning to, I think, right, to then transition to charging us.
Yeah, in 2016, 2017, they'll charge approximately $2,000 per teacher induction. So they're just going to swap out what they've been repaying the districts, they're then going to charge approximately that amount to the districts.
How long is this agreement for?
It goes, well, this agreement is for 14, 15. It's for one year, but they've sort of given the information as to what's going to happen other years out.
They're just telling us what's coming down the road, but we're not, we're not actually committing to pay them anything at this point.
We're not committing to it this year, but Contra Costa County, that is the county where we have our BITSA induction. And they're, they're just about the place where everybody has it and the state requires the BITSA induction, so they're just giving us the information, but we're only approving.
How many BITSA enrolled teachers do we have at any one time on average?
Typically, we just have four. One in 12, 13, we had five, but the last two years, we had four.
And it's typically those in their first or second year?
Prelim.
Yeah. I mean, in prelim, you can, you can be on a preliminary credential for up to five years.
Correct. Typically, it is the first two years.
Yeah.
They can stretch it out in two years, three, four, sometimes five, but typically it's the first two years.
Yeah, well, it seems, I mean, the, I'm glad Ms. Balf is still around. I don't know if she wants to speak to this item, but she's been involved in the BITSA program, I know. And it's, induction is a critically important finishing piece for our teachers and it significantly, when done well, helps them be better first and second year teachers, also increases retention dramatically. So it's worth $2,000 to $4,000 per mentor to, to me. And unfortunately, the state did eliminate, this is one of the categoricals the state eliminated in folding everything into local control funding formula. And it's one I wish they had kept separate because districts are responsible for doing a good job with BITSA. It's really a state function because our teachers go off and can teach anywhere in the state once, and if you don't, and we may be getting teachers who didn't have good induction and they're, and they're coming here. And the state should just make sure everyone's getting good induction everywhere because you get a California credential, you can teach anywhere, so.
But.
Anyway, they're not doing that, so I support.
Thank you.
Moving forward. Other comments?
No, I was just going to say, I was just going to say, thanks for also including the list because I think in terms of what school, what district.
Worth the investment, I guess is.
I think absolutely it's worth the investment. And in fact, I know that there are places where the teachers end up having to find their own BITSA mentor, have to pay for their own. It's very iffy in terms of what, what the quality is. And having been through this training, and it's one of the reasons Ms. Cologne, by the way, is on loan because she is a trainer par excellence. So that was, that was about earlier tonight. But that, the particular model that Contra Costa County uses, which is out of the Santa Cruz Teacher Center, is a really excellent one. And Contra Costa County has done a really good job over the years of making it so that the program is less burdensome to the teachers by training the mentors to do most of the legwork. And I was just talking to Mr. Ferber tonight about how hard the BITSA program is down south because the way it's led to the teachers to have to build up these big portfolios, et cetera, and we are trained so thoroughly that the teacher just has to have these conversations and then do the work, the inquiry action plans, et cetera. But the mentor is doing the keeping track of it, et cetera. And I think, Tony, you can probably attest to that because you've been going through it, that you don't have to do all the writing and all of that, which is what they do in other BITSA programs. So it's a combination that it's a particularly good program and, yeah, it makes a huge difference in terms of what the teachers get. So, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
No, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Sorrell, for recommending to bring this so the board will be well informed about the changes. Thank you.
So do we have a motion to approve the BITSA MOU with Contra Costa County Office of Ed?
Move to approve.
Marion, was that a second?
A second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
President Affo?
Yes. Okay. Next item is our board member reports. Do we have any board member reports or announcements?
So, Member Pats? So just last week was the CSBA-Alameda-Contra Costa joint meeting and it was a very productive meeting to talk about the collaboration and what CSBA can do for us. So I thought that was a nice meeting. I was, it was counterprogrammed against Tony Thurman's town hall, so I'm curious if he was able to make it to that. But, you know, I did make it and it was, it was fruitful. I enjoy CSBA's newsletters and I feel like they serve a very similar person, purpose to towns and stuff, so that's it.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for representing us. Any other board announcements?
Just that we had a finance committee meeting this afternoon or right before this meeting to look at the activities ahead in terms of a third interim, so, which was the information that was presented to the board this evening. So, yeah, more, the third interim, I guess will come in our, we have, this is it for April, right? So in May, I forgot what time in May we'll have that.
I think we have to have adopted it by June 1st is what Ms. Sue said.
So that, that information is coming to us soon.
Okay. All right. Moving on to calendar review, we have a regular meeting of the board. Next one is May 13th. And the superintendent's Facilities Committee will be meeting on May 1st at 8:20 a.m. And the next Finance Committee meeting is May 27th at 4:45.
And just a point of addition on the calendar review, the Agenda Online Company is making their software change and is strongly recommending that all districts do some review and training. So there's a thought by staff to recommend that we come a little earlier than usual on the 13th to allow the board to see some of those changes.
Uh huh. How much earlier?
I thought you might ask that. The thought was, were we at 45 minutes? It's an hour, it's an hour long training typically. Forty-five minutes to an hour.
So five, five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
On May 13th.
If that's possible, we can go ahead.
Okay.
Can we let you down?
Yeah, we'll send you an email.
Yeah. Yeah, send us an email just to remind us and we'll let you know. I think I will try to make it.
Okay.
But I'll check my calendar.
Okay, thank you.
And is the Finance Committee, I go back and forth, is it 4:45 or 5?
4:45.
Okay, I'm sorry. And I apologize for being really late today. I thought it was fine.
We thought everything was normal, sorry.
Okay. All right. We are going to close this portion of the meeting and prepare to close session. Thank you.